From first from the board and then the public. Anyone have anything? Nobody. Well, Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome. Does anyone have any public information that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, we'll move on. We're starting with a public here.
Hi, sorry. So I'm here. My name's Natalia Reddick. I live at three two five South Second Meadow Road in Eastham. And I'm just here with a few other members of a local grassroots organization advocating for year-round residents and we were under the impression there would be public comment on the RTE today. So
Yeah, we're not to that yet. So we'll
But we will there be public comment on it?
Yeah, we'll talk about when we get there.
Okay, so we should stick around.
Yeah, I would stick around.
Okay, yeah, that's all I want to know. Because if not, I just wanted to let you know we're here.
Thank you. All right, um, so we have a public hearing, a poll hearing, and Jerry's going to read the announcement.
A public hearing will be held on Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty P M in the Earl Mountain Meeting Room at the Eastham Town Hall, twenty-five hundred State Highway, and by remote participation regarding Plan Number one eight five five six two eight eight dated October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four from N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy, who requests permission to locate underground cables, conduits, manholes, including the necessary sustaining and protecting features in, under, along, and across Bridge Road. Install two hun- install two hundred seventy feet, plus or minus, of one to two-inch cable and conduit, and a new pull box, one zero zero five one slash zero zero five on Bridge Road.
All right, thank you, Jerry. All right, so we'll open the public hearing. We have someone from Eversource on the line. Marissa, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. My name is Marissa Jackson with the Rights and Permits Department at Eversource. So again, just to clarify what we're proposing this evening is the installation of cable and conduit. This is to accommodate a project we have going for Wicklow Lane. So in order to accommodate this project, what we're requesting is the installation um, of two hundred fifteen feet approximately. Our starting point would be at an existing pole seven over forty-five along Bridge Road, and we would take that to a new pull box, which is um, right at the corner of Wicklow Lane and Bridge Road. And additionally, we're asking for fifty-five feet of conduit from pole seven over forty-six to also that new pull box. And that being said, I'd be happy to address any questions.
So is this to serve underground use on Wicklow?
That's correct. We currently have underground direct buried cable there, and we really need to upgrade that to mitigate any future outages and run cable in conduit along that roadway.
Okay, great. Um, anyone else from the board have questions, Jerry?
Yeah, this will be tunnelled or molded under, under the Bridge Road, or will you be digging Bridge Road?
We would have to dig. It's noted on our sketch here that it's cable in conduit.
And how long would Bridge Road be affected by the dig?
Certainly. So what we're anticipating is maybe a two-day period. And we typically obstruct one lane of the roadway and have a police detail in force for everyone's safety.
All right, thank you.
All right, anyone else from the board? All right, anyone here for the poll hearing? No takers? Room full of people? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, any further discussion from the board? All right, if not, I'll need a motion to approve the work.
I'll make a motion to approve the work um, at, I don't know the address, sorry. The N-Star work at, where's the address?
Say, Bridge, Bridge Road and Wicklow.
Bridge Road and Wicklow, sorry.
I'll second that.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Zero. All right, next appointment Stephanie Sykes, our Shellfish, uh, Acting Shellfish Constable. Oh, sorry, you are, you're, you're official, aren't you? Sorry, Stephanie.
The Shellfish Constable. Shellfish Constable, thank you, and Animal Control Officer.
All right.
Welcome, talking, here to talk about some shellfish regulation.
Shellfish and it's quick. So we just have a clerical update request. So we've, our department over the last year or so has been revising the permitting application renewal process to reduce the administrative burden for both the department and for the grant holders, since they have different forms and fees due at about five different times of year. So doing our best to make it one and really streamline the process. So we are requesting the Select Board move to update Eastham Aqueduct Regulation six point one. It's currently due in January. We would like it due in March to be consistent with the other shellfish due dates. And then Regulation seven point five, there's no language for the actual due date in the regulations. It's just that the Select Board has the authority to determine that due date. So we would like that to be March thirty-first.
Okay, so both dates you want to be March thirty-first.
Yep.
Okay. All right, anyone have any questions? Jerry first?
Oh, that's all right. One question on seven five, uh, could you also change Board of Selectmen to Select Board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, and I don't know if there's been any progress with the idea of the shellfish advisory, but um, putting together a group, but you know, just when I saw that there were some updates, at first I was like, ooh, you know, I thought we were going to be moving the direction of having the advisory group, but when I realized that it was, you know, just the date change, I'm totally fine with this. Um, but for any like other changes moving forward, it would be nice to see that.
We would do a working group, I think, is what we've discussed. And to, just to clarify, all the grant holders were notified that this was on the very clear, it was a clerical update only. We weren't opening up any regulations to be changed. And if we were, it would be a working group and long-term process. They're all clear on that and supportive because it ends up being good for them too.
I'm sure it makes it easier for everybody. All right, thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
So I move, we approve the, um, proposed changes in the regulations uh, amended by changing Board of Selectmen to Select Board.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. All right. Rich and Colleen are here to talk about the residential tax exemption. Now, the reason we're doing this in January is we've decided, well, years ago Jackie told us that you ever consider implementing an RTE, you have to give us some lead time. That's why it comes up every January. It's not that all of the sudden we decided to do something about it. We're going to talk about it every January, hopefully, for quite a few years in the foreseeable future, and just give, would give lead time to the town because of all the administrative work it would take to implement this, um, when we actually do our real vote in August usually. So that's why we're here tonight, and they're going to give us a little rundown on what the RTE breakouts would be.
Great, thank you. And um, Devin, if you could put that presentation up on screen, help, I think, those viewing at home and online. So we changed things up a little bit this year, just to not only give you the data, uh, as to the impact Eastham, but also give you a bit of context. And before I get started, I want to really thank Colleen and the Assessing Department. They've done a great job in cleaning up the data so that we feel confident, um, presenting this to you. Uh, that being said, these are estimates, and the actuals will be different than what are presented here, uh, but we're kind of beholden to giving you kind of the ca- the worst-case scenario as it looks based on the data we have. So, um, we do know for a fact that most towns that implement this don't have a hundred percent of people that are eligible necessarily applying. And as you recall, this is an application process. So this is something that we offer, that residents would have to apply and be processed and approved to participate in a residential tax exemption. And that's why it's impactful to the Assessing Office. And so one of the reasons Colleen's here, if there's any questions about that. So, um, on the first page of the presentation, and if anybody is interested above and beyond what's on the screen, we do have a few extra copies, and a couple of big extra ones I printed by mistake, if anyone wants some big copies. And if anyone didn't get one and wants one, just leave your name and we'll print one out and either email it or print it to you.
I believe it's in the packet, it's online.
It's, it's online in the packet, yes.
Um, so the first slide here is some local property tax data. Uh, this is in the to give some context to what we're talking about today. As you are well aware, um, three Adokate communities do offer a residential tax exemption. Thirty-five percent, thirty-five percent, and Province Town and Turo, wealth rate's at thirty-two and a half. Currently, uh, the maximum is the thirty-five percent, anything between zero and thirty-five percent. Eastham, uh, does not, and Orleans, our neighboring community, does not. Um, but I thought it was good information to put down here, um, some of the programs that are offered by each of these communities and their participation in the residential tax exemption. So as you can see, um, right now, based on the data that Colleen and the Assessers Office has analyzed, we're still holding steady at fifty-five, forty-five, fifty-five percent non-resident, forty-five percent resident. Wealth fleet's roughly sixty-five, thirty-five, Turo is seventy-five, twenty-five, and Province Town seventy-nine, twenty-one. Um, and then the next column kind of shows the number of non-residents and residents. And so one of the things here that's important to us, um, if you make this decision, is just the, they order a magnitude. As you can see, Province Town has eight hundred and forty-six, uh, wealth fleet goes up to thirteen oh five, Eastham would be at, at over twenty-five hundred. And that represents the potential applicants that we'd have to process applications. And so as I've told you before, um, if you, if this was to be implemented, there would be a cost associated with it. Certainly, in the first initial years, for some, at least temporary, if it doesn't become permanent, staffing to help manage these applications. Uh, software modifications, which would be relatively modest. Um, and then the one thing that we haven't quantified, because we have the ability to absorb it, at least for a year. But in the future, we'd likely have to increase, and I know we don't talk about this much, but our allowance for abatements and exemptions account would have to go up. And these are all impacts to our tax levy. So these are things that we'd have to fit within our existing tax levy. Of all the towns on the Adokate, we all offer a property tax exemptions for various reasons that we've talked about in the past, and a deferral program. The deferral program is relatively new to Eastham. That's only a couple of years. That's for elderly income qualifying individuals that can defer paying a hundred percent of their tax, and it gets leaned on their property, and upon the passing of that property, um, the tax gets settled. And then, one of the things, um, the CPC and Mary Shaw has been talking to me about, and the Finance Committee has talking, been talking about, is there any tax relief that we can offer through the Community Preservation Act? Uh, Pro- uh, Province Town has the first hundred thousand dollars of CPA tax exempted, and they also have the low-income exemption. And the CPC of Eastham is recommending that we adopt the low-income exemption. So anyone that has a income qualified would, um, be exempt from paying the three percent surcharge. And so that requires a, um, article and passage at town meeting. Uh, so I'm introducing it tonight on behalf of the CPC, and that's something I'll get through them to get, um, article language to the Select Board to include in the, potentially include in the warrant. And then finally, um, each community has a taxation aid fund. Um, this is the traditional one that's limited to elderly or, um, disabled, um, funded entirely by donation. And then, of course, I'm very proud to report, as you all know, we now, for the first time, have our Resident Taxpayer Assistance Fund, um, which, um, Bob and Jamie, uh, presented to you a couple of meetings ago about a target assistance program of up to five hundred dollars for this upcoming year. For those that have a neat, demonstrated need, and that is also an application process. So, um, we do anticipate funding that through a free cash appropriation, uh, as part of the budget process of this fiscal year. So that's kind of this slide here, and if you can go to the next slide, Devin. This kind of shows the impact of the RTE in the communities that have it, as well as an ordering of the tax burden in each of the communities. So I kind of listed it in the order of highest to lowest. And as I tell you every year, when we have our budget meeting, we maintain a pretty relatively low tax burden across Cape Cod um, and in the state, uh, and we are the lowest on the Adokate. Province Town, uh, the average single-family tax bill, and this is derived from Department of Revenue data. And some of these impacts I had to derive based on that data. So, you know, we're not, it's not like we've analyzed it individually in each individual town, but it's easily derived from the Department of Revenue. So Province Town at ten point five, uh, Eastham just under sixty-five hundred. With the state average for twenty-five going to be around seventy-nine hundred. But of course, uh, Province Town, Turo, and Wealth Fleet have the RTE, so what's the impact to them? Well, if you're a resident, um, that second column kind of indicates the benefit. At a thirty-five, Wealth Fleet being a thirty-two and a half percent RTE. So you have a net property tax, and you can see on that basis, we're still very comparable, uh, in between Turo and Wealth Fleet as the net property tax burden. And then I put in parentheses there, if you're one of the people we're trying to target with Residential Taxpayer Assistance Fund, and you will get that five hundred dollar award, then we're down under fifty-nine hundred, or about, under six thousand dollars, but fifty-nine seventy-three. And of course, this comes at a cost, so that next column represents the cost to the non-residents to adopt this. And so if you're in Province Town as a resident, you're paying, you know, almost nine thousand. And if you're a non-resident, eleven thousand, three fifty-three. So one of the things to also take away from this slide, and it's more evident on the Eastham slide when we get to that. But you notice, um, in Wealth Fleet, the benefit versus the cost. And then in Turo, the benefit versus the cost. Um, the benefit typically goes up and the cost goes down. And that's because of the percentage of participation. It's a little anomaly in Province Town, I believe, because they just have so many high-value properties that it kind of screws up that formula a little bit. But, uh, you'll see it on the Eastham slides, the impact, uh, what it might look like in Eastham. Uh, and then finally, the other thing I wanted to mention here, one of the things that Colleen did a good job of working on the last couple of years, particularly this year, was identifying those properties that certainly aren't going to be included. So, for example, um, land is never anyone's per- principal residence. So we have four hundred and seventy-one parcel, uh, vacant parcels of land that would pay the higher rate, whether it's owned by a resident or a non-resident. And if a resident has, for example, two homes, or a home that's a principal residence and land, they'll get the benefit for one, but not for the other. So this is something to keep in mind. Uh, the next slide, please. Doesn't apply, it's, um, this is just a residential, uh, classification.
So they wouldn't pay the higher rate or the lower rate, they'd just pay the same rate?
Colleen, anything to add up to this point?
Um, I mean, speaking to what Jackie just said, it's, it's just shifting within the residential class. So whatever the, the normal tax rate would have been without the shift is what everyone outside of the residential class would pay.
Okay.
Um, and I guess to add to, in your column here, showing what the benefit could potentially be bringing the tax bill down to with that five hundred dollar discount for, for those in need. You had mentioned the CPA exemption in the previous slide, and the amount, just to give you kind of a, a value for that, for the median single-family home, the CPA is three percent of the value. So for the median single-family home, I think that equates to about a hundred and sixty-nine, a hundred and seventy dollars. So, together, six hundred and seventy off of your bill if you, if you do both.
Next slide, please. So, uh, how's all this translate into Eastham? Uh, here's what it looks like for a ten percent residential exemption, uh, the first column being where we are at fifty-five, forty-five. And then we're just showing comparative examples at sixty, forty, and seventy-five, twenty-five, just as a matter of context. Um, in the first column, uh, the average residential value is seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, so that's pretty easy math. Ten percent of that average value is seventy-eight thousand. That's the value that comes off of the residence valuation. So they just don't get taxed on that seventy-eight thousand dollars of value. Um, however, because we're shifting, and in this case, we're shifting, uh, one million, five fifty-six, the tax rate changes. So even though you get exempted seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of value, you're paying a higher tax rate. Uh, everybody pays a higher tax rate. Uh, everybody in the residential class, I should say, pays a higher tax rate. And I'll just kind of go to the bottom here. On the average value home, that benefit is three hundred and forty-nine dollars. The differential between the savings and value, less the amount for the higher tax rate, amounts to about a three hundred and forty-nine dollar benefit to residents at a cost of two hundred and eighty-one dollars to, um, ineligible or non-residents. Um, if you were just to read that across, you see three seventy-eight and two forty-eight, sixty, forty, and four sixty-four, and one fifty-three at seventy-five, twenty-five. And so that goes to the discussion that lots of communities have about the participation percentage. As you can see, in our case, um, without a lot of these high-value homes that are way over the break-even, um, for the, every increase in the non-resident in participation, uh, the benefit to the resident goes up, but the cost to the non-resident goes down. So at fifty-five percent, you're getting a three hundred and forty-nine dollar benefit versus four sixty-four, at a cost of two eighty-one versus one fifty-three. Um, and the other thing that changes, um, if you look at the levy shifted line, under our current arrangement, about a million and a half of levy gets shifted from the residents to non-residents. But as the percentage of participation changes, that decreases because there are um, less residents to benefit, so therefore, less levy to shift to them. However, more non-residents to pay for that shift, hence the, the changing in the savings versus cost. And because of that, uh, the break-even amount also changes at each participation level. So right now, it's at about one point eight million. Uh, and under the seventy-five, twenty-five would go all the way up to almost three point four. And so this is the ten percent, and if you go to the next slide, uh, another, one, one more slide. This is what twenty percent looks like in summary. And we have this data, um, for any percentage you'd like to look at, we can always get back to you, um, but at ten and twenty percent, at least the ten percent, that's multiplied easily for anything you might do, uh, so you kind of get a, uh, order of magnitude of it. Uh, as you can see, on the twenty percent, um, it's pretty much the same calculation. The value exempted is one fifty-six, which is double, obviously, the ten percent. So we're shifting, we're making more value of your property less taxable. Um, the numbers of participa- participants doesn't change. Um, the levy shifted obviously changes. Uh, and therefore, the tax rate goes higher. Uh, the break-even amount stays the same, but the benefit and cost obviously change because it's a higher value. So under this example, uh, the benefit is seven hundred and twenty-nine to residents, at a cost of five eighty-seven to nine residents. Versus under the seventy-five, twenty-five, you kind of see the range of it becomes a little, perhaps a little more palatable under something that's more like, you know, a Province Town Turo model. Um, or not model, but circumstance. And then finally, if you go to the next slide, we do have our individual calculations. This is something that we've been developing and improving every year. So again, uh, hats off to the Assessing Department for preparing this. And this is the same as, um, historically, we, very similar to what we've historically shown you. Uh, some of the improvements, though, is we do now make sure this jives and ties out. And to the extent it's different, we know why it's different than the state calculator. So that's helpful to know, and then know that we're kind of calculating things the same way that the state would be doing it. And then the other thing that, that I kind of liked, that was important me to get in here this year. Um, historically, under that first column, under the current all-residential property owners, we had the number of property owners per hundred thousand dollars of value. And now, if you notice in the middle and the third column there, we've got it broken out by how many actual individual residents there are per stratification of value as well as non-residents. And in this case, we do know that if you add everything up over that orange line under the resident column, the middle column there, that would tell you how many residents would be impacted and actually cost them more, even though they would qualify for the, um, ta- residential tax exemption.
Below the, below.
Below the line, yeah. Which line?
Below the orange.
Below the orange line, there's about sixty properties or so, I think.
Because that's the break-even point?
Right, so those people would actually pay.
So that's been
Even with an exemption, they'd pay more because of the higher rate?
Because of the higher rate.
Hopefully, that was an improvement. That was a question in the past, you know, how many people ballpark are we talking about? That gives us a pretty good answer. And, um, at this point, um, I'll ask if Colleen has anything to add. I know she has a couple of slides to just go through real quickly as well. So, Colleen?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think, for the most part, uh, back on the slide that we were just on, if we could go back to Yes, so you'll see, Rich had mentioned previously, the, the parcels that aren't in the calculation of being eligible, the vacant land, accessory lots. Of those four hundred and seventy-one, I think it was two hundred and forty-five of those that are actually owned by residents. So even if they saw a reduction because they were eligible on their domicile parcel, they'd still see an increase on the non-domicile vacant land parcel or accessory, if they had, you know, a lot next to their house that had, say, their pool on it or a shed on it or something, those would still go up. So those also have to be taken into account, I think, as kind of a, a double whammy for them. Or, or a negative. Or a net, net negative, right, potentially, depending on the value.
It reduces the, the value of the RTE for them.
Right, for those, those taxpayers. Back to, I had mentioned before, if you combine the, the five hundred off from the Taxpayer Assistance Fund with the CPA exemption, that's six hundred and sixty dollars or six hundred and seventy dollars would be the equivalent of, of fifteen percent RTE adoption. Essentially, just based on
If they qualify for inco- income qualify.
Income qualify, right, so.
So not everyone who's a resident, but
Right, it would be targeting those who potentially may need it more based on their, you know, their financial, their income, their
Do you know the AMI percentage for that?
So for the, for the CPA, it's I don't remember, I think it's between eighty to a hundred percent of the AMI.
It's lower than our residential.
Resident Taxpayer Assistance Fund is one of the things I'm, you know, relatively proud about is, uh, we got the flexibility within our legislation to set these things, and the board was generous and intent, and that is not necessarily to be stripped income qualification, like a lot of things are, but more circumstance and then, and, you know, you know, you have a bad spot that you need to get through, that help type of thing.
So I, another thing, I just wanted to mention, the HUD statistics show that in Eastham roughly thirty-one point eight percent of the population may fall into that, that threshold of being between the eighty to a hundred percent.
Sorry, what percentage?
Thirty-one point eight.
Whoa.
That's data from twenty twenty-three, I believe. I don't have the most current twenty-four data from them.
Are they all, that thirty-one percent all homeowners?
That's, they don't indicate that, that, that's just from the HUD population data. So it, that, it's hard to compare because it's, there's no way of telling, but I think not saying that all of those in that threshold, or that it would be limited to that, that threshold bracket, but if, if we could take the fifty thousand that we may need to put in place if this were implemented for additional staff and put it into the Taxpayer Assistance Fund, and that you could target those specific populations that would really benefit or may need this more than the general giving of an exemption to all twenty-five, eighty-one that could be eligible.
Do we know, because you mentioned the vacant and accessory land mixed use, and you said about, a little more than half are residents. Do we know how many of those parcels? Like, how many residents does that apply to?
Two, two hundred.
Two hundred and sixty, something.
That's lots in properties, but
Owned by residents.
Owned by residents.
Owned by residents, but I want to know how many residents. Four houses. Four houses or does it still, is it two, is it two hundred and fifty people or is it?
Hundred and twenty.
A hundred and twenty.
I don't have that report with me on hand tonight, but I can get that information to you. I did. It it's hard to tell specifically without going through each individual one. So the report that I generated was more, it was based on if their mailing address was within Eastham Wellfleet or Orleans, because oftentimes we have a lot of homeowners here who have PO boxes if they're on the line, you know. So it's hard to say that all of those two hundred and sixty would be definitely residents, but that's just a most likely scenario. And I didn't go, I have them all on the report, so we could go through or you could look to see if there are duplicates. It's hard to tell if they're, you know, owned by one
Or if they're even residents, if they have a different mailing address, you'd have to look at the tax, you have to look at their voting status to see if they're actually a Wellfleet resident or Eastham.
So I did, I mean, we do that when we're when we're getting the split numbers, but we don't do that. I didn't do that for each individual report that I ran. But I can, I can pass along the report if you'd like.
Yeah, it was just useful. I mean, it's not directly comparable. It was just useful for when we did the short term rental like certificate thing to be like, how many people would actually like be affected by it in that way? And that was really
Well, it's interesting you mention that because that's another ancillary piece of information that I didn't think about getting the information for you guys. But maybe I ought to anyway, because it would be good to know this is. You know, some of, one of the things I always worry about doing things is unintended consequences of things. So you know, we have definitely had a drop in short, in a long term rental properties in town over the the recent years, right? So how many of those that are remaining are owned by residents and how many are owned by non-residents? Because it occurred to me as I was going through this and talking to our housing.
They're owned by residents, they'll see.
If it's owned by non-residents and their costs are going up, does that have a effect of increasing rents for people that live here? So, um, I don't have that data, but that was a, but since you mentioned it, Susan, that was a piece that occurred to me that, you know, probably ought to consider as
But it wouldn't matter if they're owned by a resident or a non-resident, would it? Because they're they're not living there. The resident is living there.
No, but if they're renting it
Oh, that's right.
By the owner.
So Province Town did pass special legislation to include if you're renting to a year round resident, then you can take the residential tax exemption. But you know, we we know how long that takes. That wouldn't be for this year, that would be.
If it passed, like interior, if it passes year, it is something we could consider moving for.
Yes.
But but Province Town does not, they don't require the owner to pass the savings on in the rent.
Oh.
Or do they?
I don't know. I don't know.
Could we?
Because if it doesn't pass to
I don't think so.
I'm not sure legally whether you can do that. I'm just trying to figure out that it wouldn't necessarily help then the resident.
And it wouldn't.
Although it keeps the, potentially keeps
The rent stable.
Couldn't hurt the resident. Right.
Okay.
It would definitely be a tax break for that homeowner.
Just renting.
Did we not get something similar out of the housing bill that was passed at the state?
We did.
Was that was basically that?
It's slightly different than that, but it is similar to that. It has more guidelines of
Income?
Of income and there's no, there's no rent cap on it, so they can still charge what they want, but the people who they're renting to have to be within a certain threshold of the AMI. Complicated, but
Yeah.
But available. So close.
Yeah.
So close. Do you have more, more? Because I wanted to, you know, we've discussed this every year for, I want to say four years now, maybe.
Four years, at least.
More than that, because it was before COVID when we
A long time. And each year it's new for many residents and this is not a it's not a simple thing as you you're hearing, you know, ten percent of the discussion, but I just maybe, and maybe Colleen can certainly do this better than I do, but the state of Massachusetts gives municipalities very little leeway on what we can and can't do in terms of taxation. It's really a a state level, um, privilege. And they have allowed us to do the property tax, but we can't exempt things just because we want to exempt things. So they've given us some tools, mostly veterans exemptions, elderly exemptions, low income exemptions, putting off your taxes, as Rich, um, stated. We've tried to create some other tools locally to help people who need help paying taxes with that. But as you listen to this discussion and as we continue to learn more about it, it is not a, it's a tool, but it's not a scalpel. It's definitely more like a baseball bat in terms of how it applies this. So uh, when Rich talks about unintended consequences, that's something that we struggle with. We certainly don't want to have residents have more expense or have have, uh, residents lose their housing because of this. So it it's very complicated and we struggle with different questions. I learned something new every single time we discuss it, which is just because it's so odd. I think if it was income based or even more property value based, it would help us out, but it's not. And it doesn't change, it doesn't create any more revenue for us. So it's just a very strange tool and I wish they would have amended it when they amended the Housing Act.
What what brought about this tool?
It's from seventies?
Seventy nine, nineteen seventy nine.
I think it was, it was the same thing that we're experiencing now was the cities and and communities like Nantucket that were you know, having a lot, a all of a sudden, a sudden shift in non-resident owners.
Well, back in those days, I think it was actually probably more of the cities.
Cities, Boston definitely has it.
They were the first to enact a lot of these.
Instead, in in seventy nine to like eighty eight, there was a huge, huge boom in housing. Right, maybe not, maybe not eighty eight, maybe eighty six. A huge boom in housing prices. And then there was the the drop where actually on the Cape, I know this because I bought in eighty eight and eleven years later, the house was was assessed less than what I paid for in eighty eight. But you had that drop and then the then the jump again after in around two thousand or two thousand and one, the prices went sky high again. So we're back in the time of like what was happening in nineteen seventy nine.
And, you know, that's why we started discussing it, right? Because the board was very concerned that, you know, we don't want to become Province Town. We don't want to have a ninety ten. We don't want to be true at seventy five twenty five. You know, we're very happy at fifty five forty five or some version of almost fifty fifty. That seems to work for our community better and we don't want to lose any more ground. So that's why we started to discuss this. Just to give a context, because I know when we start talking about these things, it's, I think, sometimes difficult to follow, even though Colleen does a great job and Rich does a great job explaining it, it's still incomprehensible.
Several iterations, several years to catch on. Bob?
Um, question, maybe for Colleen. How long have we been hanging out at fifty five forty five?
Since I've been here. So this is the third time that I've done this with you. And that's how long that we've been fifty five forty five. I don't know.
We did a historical
Yeah. Yeah, we did do that. That was in one of our presentations.
And we got close to sixty percent a couple of times in the past twenty years, but not it it really has been very stable.
It floats like Where we are now. We did get closer to fifty fifty again, because a lot of people came here. So then
Right, the pandemic.
Twenty twenty was what? I'm sorry?
We got closer to fifty fifty again.
That's what I thought. I I thought the demographics were, except for COVID, we were going to end up with more full time residents.
We did for a year or two and then
But I think that's, in my opinion, does anyone else think that that might be the trend coming back?
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know. People were thinking that the baby boomers might sell and so go the other direction, but I don't know.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a Swami thing, right? You don't, no one knows, but it's just
I I have one question.
Go ahead, Jerry.
So the amount that of the exemption is based on the average, not the median hu- 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 house?
And it's the average of the single family.
Single
Well, of the residential class, not the single family. So it's slightly different than the example we always give because we give it in most presentations about, you know, finances and burdens. We use the average single family home and the median single family home, but the state dictates that you calculate it based on the average of the the residential class because they're the who will be impacted.
That includes apartments and multi-use buildings.
So
Okay.
So it wouldn't be in relation to your house value? It would be
No, so the single family value that used includes single family homes. It also includes mixed used buildings that have a residential component to it. It includes land.
So
And that derives a value. In the case of the ten percent, the value was seventy eight thousand some odd dollars. That seventy eight thousand is a reduction to every single eligible property.
Eligible property. So if your property value
That's why the lower the property value.
Okay, okay. Yeah. And I was wondering if we know what the participation rate in our neighboring towns are because it's application based. So if you are a property owner in Eastham and you don't feel as though you need this assistance, you don't have to apply for it. And so I was wondering if neighboring towns, um.
It's something less than the maximum. So we calculate it fifty five forty five, so forty five percent was whatever the number was, two thousand and five eighty one or something like that. It'll be something less than that. Not everybody will apply, but I I wouldn't count on it being substantially less, maybe.
No, I think what she was asking is like, do you know what Wellfleet's participation rate is? Like, what percentage of the people that are eligible actually?
Right. The the data that they've provided me, since it's already been implemented there, are their actual numbers.
Participation, right.
Oh, so it's just the
Right.
So these are, you don't know. These are just their, because I always thought Province Town was about ninety percent non-resident, so.
But they also got more people.
So maybe this accounts for some people not applying.
Right. And then the only one, the other slide that shows Orleans data, that's projected because they have not implemented. And they're actually, they have
Higher disparity here.
There's, there's just kind of flipped.
They're fifty four, forty six, I think.
Fifty four resident and forty six none?
No, no, the other
Other way.
Other way around. I don't have that slide back up here.
Yeah, because you didn't have a percentage for at least.
I think we got it after, we got it after the fact and
I mean, it's honestly, it's hard to imagine anyone who would be eligible for this that wouldn't want to take it like, I mean, unless you're really, um.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know what, under what, on what conditions, if someone did it and they took it and they gave it to charity or something like that.
Well, it's thirteen
Why wouldn't you take it?
It's thirteen hundred dollars at twenty percent. The difference.
What? For which?
Which property?
Which property?
For any property.
No.
No.
No, Jerry, it's different depending on what your
Value is.
No. No, the, look at the last two columns on that slide. It's thirteen hundred fifteen dollars and eighty seven cents.
Oh, yeah, but that's split between the resident and the non-resident.
Resident and not, that's the difference. If you refuse to apply, it's costing you one thousand, three hundred.
Not
What that represents is the differential at every valuation level between what the resident would pay and the non-resident would pay. And that's consistently equal.
Yeah.
But you go back to where you were, Devin, there you go. Um, if you can blow that up just a little bit.
Seven and seven or five.
So let's look at the, um, the green line or
Green, all right.
What's the green line? The average?
Yes.
So on that green line, the value before the exemption at twenty percent is eight hundred and thirty nine thousand. After the exemption, it's six hundred and eighty three thousand. So your ta- sa- tax savings is seven hundred and twenty nine bucks.
Right.
And then you go over to the non-resident, their value's still eight hundred and thirty nine thousand, but at the higher tax rate. So their taxes go up and that cost to them is five hundred and eighty seven dollars.
So if you add the, if you add the exemption
But if I refuse, if I refuse to, if I don't apply,
Yes.
I'm going to pay one thousand, three hundred, fifteen dollars more than I would have if I had applied.
Oh.
Because I'm for
Seven hundred.
I'm forgiving, I'm foregoing seven hundred twenty eight dollars and I'm paying more of five hundred and eighty seven dollars. So the difference of not, if I, if you don't apply, it's costing you one thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars and eighty seven cents. It's just that simple. That's the amount. Okay, I understand. All right, that's what I thought.
Even though that's not the savings off your bill, it
Thank you, Jerry. Sorry, we argued.
That's how much I, that's how much it costs me. That's the real cost.
But it's, yeah, but it's not the savings on your bill, though, right?
No, because my bill's going to be higher if I, if I don't apply.
Right.
Don't apply.
You don't apply, you pay the extra.
So I pay the extra, so the the delta is one thousand, three hundred dollars.
Yes.
So that's how much it costs me to not apply. When Jackie's saying, who wouldn't apply, it's going to cost you one thousand, three hundred dollars if you don't apply and you're an eligible resident. No matter what the value of your property is. Okay.
Up to
All right, any other?
Are we, do you want to do discussion or is Rich still presenting?
Yeah, do we, do we have
More on the present.
Usually we have the board gives a recommendation, Board of Assessors.
Board of Assessors.
Yeah, that is further down a few slides down. So historically, the board has voted to not implement the RTE because of the split and that holds true for fiscal twenty five. They haven't yet discussed it for fiscal twenty six. We'll discuss that again. You know, as the classification hearing gets closer. So since the split has not changed, it holds true that they continue to not recommend the implementation at this time. I had a couple, the next slide down, Devin. Um, I don't think we have to go over the the calculation. If anybody ever needs to reach out for me to explain it a little better, whether the public or the board, I'm happy to sit down with anybody or provide resources, but I think we do it year after year. So I think we have a pretty good grasp on how it's being calculated.
All right, anyone from the board?
Question, um, at some point you did mention that you would have to hire more staff to implement this. Um, and I was wondering how much that would cost.
Well, full time administrative positions probably in the board a magnitude of sixty, sixty five thousand. You know, maybe once we got somebody on board and, um, we, you know, made this an electronic process, we'd make it as simple as possible. You know, maybe we could phase that out, but, you know, the first year, starting from scratch, twenty five hundred applications. We also have, um, some complicated issues with trusts and things like that that require some review. Uh, we would definitely have to have staff up for at least the first couple of years.
What's required to apply? What is the law require?
So you have to prove domiciles. So the way that we do that, we look at the census, you have to be on the census, definitely. If you drive, your motor vehicle excise tax should be coming through the town of Eastham.
Okay.
And your income tax return should be filed from the address you're applying for.
Okay.
So similar to, you know, it wasn't for this reason, but in Truro, it's the same thing. They had election, uh, you know, resident, are you a resident to vote in Truro at town meeting? Same process, you have to go through a determined domicile. Are you eligible to be a resident and be on that voter rolls? So similar process on this. Obviously, we're not checking for voting, but we're checking for eligibility of of this.
And it's as of the tax date for the fiscal year that you're being billed for. So for fiscal twenty six, if you were to implement it, the tax date would have been last week, January first. You would have already been on the census. Anything after that, you might be eligible for the year after. That's why we're, I mean, we're confident in our number, but also I was working on this in December. So anybody that got on the census or changed motor vehicle information before January, it could still change.
So a second homeowner who planned to move here in September or in June, whatever, they wouldn't be eligible for it next, this year until they'd have to wait a calendar year after.
Yeah, they wouldn't be eligible for the bill they receive in September. The fiscal twenty six bill, they'd have to wait, so.
Me, one other question to just pop up. Uh, property is owned by a trust. And the beneficiaries of the trust are myself and my sister. And I live here and she lives in New Hampshire. Is that, if, would that home be eligible for this? Because one of the beneficiaries is a non-resident?
If it's your primary resident.
Because one of you meets the criteria, you'd be eligible.
Okay, because because I'm, because I would be domiciled here and therefore I'm eligible.
So at least one person on the So at least one person on the trust has to actually live at the resident.
And they sh, it, it gets complicated. They shouldn't be receiving, the same trust shouldn't be receiving an exemption in, say, Boston or something as that being their domicile.
Yeah, because Boston has it as well. Okay.
So I mean, some of these, it's not as cut and dry as, you know, oh, check the box, you're on the census, you have motor vehicle. You have to really, there's a lot of research in some of these. So it's, it could be quite time-consuming for twenty-five hundred.
I understand. Thank you.
Yes. I mean, I just want to reiterate because I spent three years trying to get this darn thing passed for the rest of that.
The other thing passed.
So I don't, I keep, you know, getting some credit for it, but, you know, to me.
It's all right.
We started that path because of this RTE discussion. I wanted to provide an alternative. We finally got something in place. And I'd encourage you to think, you know, broadly on that program. You know, we kind of came up with some rules as a pilot year for this upcoming year. But once we see how that goes, we can, you can do anything you want with that program. And to me, that's a tool. Because you can modify that each and every year as you need and as you see fit and as the community needs. As opposed to something that's one decision that honestly will never get to be able to be revoked because you'll never be able to change your mind or any future board won't be able to change their mind on this. Um, so I just want to give that program some credit and, um, keep pumping that.
A great tool in our toolbox.
I made a little comment.
So any other questions from the board, Jay, um, Suzanne?
No, it was a comment about the tool, the, the tool in the toolbox and that we do have that wonderful fund. And when I was thinking about this discussion coming up, I was like, wow. I would maybe feel a little bit differently about this if we had gotten the real estate transfer fee, like would absolutely. Because we only have so many tools and every single time one of the tools that we have comes up, there's always going to be somebody who says, this isn't going to solve the housing problem. And I'm like, you're right, it's not. Because if we wanted to solve the housing problem, you don't, you don't like those options. And I promise you, you're not going to like those options. We could, but we're not going to. Um, so we have to just do damage control with the tools. We're just like little tiny pieces here and there to do damage control because we don't have an option to do, to solve it. Um, but I am, again, I really wish we got the real estate transfer fee because it would have given us a funding stream for our fund. Or we had a discussion a couple of meetings ago of all of the, like, great housing initiatives that we could do. But there's no funding for it. There's no funding for it. And that also means there wasn't enough will to do the real estate tra, transfer fee either. And so I, that's just super disheartening and it's disheartening to, like, I think my vote on this tonight would have been different if we had gotten the real estate transfer fee. Because it would have been like, cool, we have this bucket of money that we know we're going to get and we can do stuff with it. We could do a more targeted approach. Um, but it didn't, I'm just.
Just, uh, the only comment I would have to that, Amy, is, um, one of the clever benefits of our Resident Taxpayer Assistance Fund, just to remind you, and, you know, that's not widely known. But we got in the legislation that we can raise that money outside of the limits of Proposition Two and a Half. Meaning that we can fund that regardless of budgetary constraints otherwise. And in my mind, that's eminently fair because if we're saying that in lieu of spending money to implement X, we can take that money and implement Y that we like something better, that's basically a funding stream.
More comment. I, I think that, um, that answer is so much more targeted, um, than the RTE alternative. Um, we're going after people who are in need and the whole community is supporting it because there's no difference in who's, who's actually contributing to it. We all are. So I just have a, a mi, mindset toward that. I like the idea of targeting the assistance that way.
Jamie? Thank you. Yeah, um, I agree with that, that I do, you know, having programs where we can target the assistance and where the funding goes is, you know, obviously preference for, I think, this entire board. Um, which is why Rich and everybody on the board works so hard to get some of these programs started. But the reality is the Commonwealth, like we did that, the town did that. But the Commonwealth, like what, what do they offer us to use right now? They don't. Unless you're over sixty-five, unless you're a veteran, or unless you income-qualify. If you're a working-class person in the town of Eastham, there is nothing for you, nothing to help you. Um, so it doesn't matter, you know, how many kids you have, doesn't matter, there's nothing out there unless you qualify.
Family support package.
That's, yes, family support package is great. But as far as the, you know, the cost of your housing goes, um, there's nothing that we can offer working-class residents in Eastham. And right now, that population is rapidly disappearing and we're seeing it in our neighboring towns too. Um, you know, families are really struggling to be here. The housing shortage happens when you have people who are able to have a higher-paying job in a city. If I lived in Boston or if I lived in New York, I, my salary, it would be astronomically higher than anything I can make out here. And I'd have the ability to buy a second home or a third home. So when you have people now, instead of just owning their home, but now owning their home plus three, that's three families that don't have a home. And that's what's happening out here. Um, you're seeing these houses turn over into short-term rentals, into a retirement home one day maybe for somebody. Um, and you're finding now we have work, workforce shortage. Right? So what? So we're going to build workforce housing in these, you know, fringe areas of town and condense everybody into that? That's the resolution? That's not. It's not the resolution. Um, it's not for me. Um, so unfortunately for some folks here and fortunately for others, I'm definitely voting in favor of the RTE and I always will. Um, it's a powerful tool for our residents and it's the only tool for a lot of our residents right now. So. Right. Thank you, Jamie. Um, all right. Anything else from the board? Now I'm going to, I am going to open it up to the public. Please keep your comments brief and try not to repeat what other people have said.
I know this repetition will.
Yeah. Um, so if you keep it around, yeah, if you keep it around a minute, that would be fabulous.
Um, I got it.
Jerry's got, Jerry's on it. All right. So if you want to come up and, uh, say a few words, whether for or against or just, and, and just, that, you know, this is just sort of a consensus from the board that we're going to vote tonight about what's going to happen in August. That's when the real vote is to whether or not to implement an RTE.
And I'll raise my hand when forty-five seconds is up.
One minute, right?
Well, you have a minute. I just.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That was a cute.
You get a warning. Yeah.
I, I thought you were cutting me short.
No, no, no. Giving you a little bit of, uh, notice.
Okay. Uh, my name's Bridget McKenna. I'm a resident, um, of Ten Juniper Way. I've spoken with a couple of you before. So now at least you can.
We got your letter.
Thank you. A face to the name or a name to the face. Um, thank you, Rich, and Colleen. I know I don't want to waste time, but I really appreciate the summary. I think the data being explained that way was really necessary because there's so many different scenarios and uncertainty and it's nice to have it concisely explained. And that needs to be shared, I think, more, um, when these discussions arise. I think, um, it hasn't been brought up, and I don't think that the vote is not a permanent vote, that you guys do approve it annually if we do adopt an RTE. So it's something that if it's not working out, I know we're talking about the time and money that it costs to, um, implement it. But it's not this infinite decision. So we can try it out and we can go back or we can change the rate. I think that's a possibility as well. Um, I think with the income-based opportunities, it doesn't incorporate debt, which a lot of us have. Student loans, medical debt. I have two twins that are almost two that were born at thirty-seven weeks and we only just recently paid it off. So considering those other scenarios that aren't in your bubble, that aren't part of your life, I think everyone needs to expand what other people are facing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amy, Rich? Let me just comment, just, um, just again, want to pump up our new program. If, um, our Resident Taxpayer Assistance Fund, this isn't to change anybody's argument or comments. I don't mean it that way. But it's, it's a way of advertising what's coming up, is not income-based. Any resident can apply. Alls you have to do is, um, have a reason why you think you need the benefit in a short interview with our assessor and a select board member to approve it. And, um, we are offering up to five hundred dollars. So if there is a compelling need, student loans, additional child, uh, job loss or a cut in hours, those are all perfectly valid reasons that this, what we are anticipating and is for anyone under the age of sixty.
Hi, my name is Natalia Riddick. I live in Eastham. Um, I think I and all of us really appreciate your in-depth discussion about this and putting in so much effort into like actually looking at the numbers and evaluating how it impacts our community. People are obviously listening, um, and we care. So I do think that adopting the RTE despite the nuances would discourage the further loss of year-round housing and from being converted to part-time because of the financial incentive of having part-time housing. Um, I do think that looking at these numbers, adopting an increased RTE would still globally assist a substantial majority of our year-round population and incl, including as has been kind of talked about, our working-class young professionals, our vulnerable elders. And I know there are other things available, but, you know, those families and workers as well. So while I know this issue is clearly financially complex, I am in favor of the select board considering adopting at least some level of the RTE to begin to assist and affirm a commitment to supporting year-round taxpayers and at some level before we actually become like P-Town in Truro and shift away from having long-term housing options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Scott Sebastian. I'm a resident of Eastham and, um, I have spoken with a number, I'm a family of small child. Spoken with a number of other people, other families with small children and not to, you know, you know, say the same thing over and over again. But there are a lot of challenges, uh, in the town and in the outer Cape for a small family. People who necessarily don't necessarily fit under the, you know, who don't really income-qualify for programs but are still struggling because the AMI is so crazy, uh, out here. So, uh, anything helps, especially the housing shortage. I mean, we don't have a large Band-Aid, so small Band-Aids will have to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Anyway, Joan?
Hi, Joan Lockhart, one-twenty Steel Road. I'm a full-time resident and I am against the RTE. I think that it's not, uh, it's not needs-based across the board. There are lots of full-time people here who don't need this benefit and there are probably some part-time owners who inherited properties who don't have the extra money to continue, to continue to pay. And I worry that it creates more division among the part-timers and the full-timers in Eastham. So I'm against it.
Right. Thanks.
And I actually, I do think, one other thing, I'd love to see a Good Neighbor Fund that's on the tax bill that could go to your fund, Rich, that would help people that need help because I recognize that need.
I think we, yeah, we've talked about putting that in the tax bills.
And not just a ten dollar, you know, give five hundred dollars, give a thousand dollars.
Leave, leave something in your estate to the town.
Not only that, but just, okay, I'm done. Thank you.
No, no.
No, no, no.
We have more time.
Seconds left.
You have more time.
I just think that we need to target our help to the people who need it. I believe firmly in helping young families and people who need to live here. But there's a lot of us who are retirees, I'm one, who don't need this ten percent. And I'd like to give it to a fund. I'd like to make that easy to happen, uh, as part of being a good neighbor.
Rich will accept checks in the hall in way of, uh, again, not to influence the discussion.
That's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
Not to influence the discussion, but in way of advertising, if anyone's watching and wants to contribute to our fund, we are accepting contributions and we will be rolling out, leading up to town meeting, some videos and promotions to allow people to make tax-deductible contributions to the Eastham Community Fund to further our program. So feel free to contribute.
Hi, Dave Hobbs, one-ninety Sparrow Hock Lane. Um, just to be fair about it, I'm part of the Board of Assessors as well as a few other boards. I don't want the RTE. It will hurt as many people as it helps. And there's no way to get around that. With the fund that Rich is setting up, that can be targeted at anybody that needs the help. But you're going to have people that it will help if you adopt the RTE, but you're also going to have people that you've hurt by adopting that. And it, it just doesn't, doesn't make any sense. You want to target the people that need help, all of those people, and not give money away to people that don't need it. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Dave.
Raising my hand is not from time's up. It's just to give you a head start. All right. Thanks.
Anybody else? Tom?
Tom?
Tom's got the big list.
I'm all done, Jerry. Yeah, you're all done.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
What I'm distributing there is actually the letter that I sent to you on Friday. I told you I'd bring the signatures.
I saw on Facebook how many. I won't spoil your thunder. Go ahead. I know, I see that.
Obviously, my name's Tom McMurphy. For those I don't know, I'm president of the Full-Time Taxpayer Association of Eastham. And, and obviously as that letter states, I'm not in favor of adopting the RTE at this time. For three items that I'll cover later, but also stipulated in, in the letter that just delivered to the select board as well. But housing problem is not a Cape Cod problem. It's not an Eastham problem. It's a national problem, no matter where you live. It's a challenge for all folks here. Okay, the recor, recor, this problem dates back to two thousand eight. It was already talked about earlier. We have a housing crisis. We've never bounced back from the bubble burst and we have not built quiet housing in order to support the constituents of this town and the rest. Kudos to Eastham, getting out ahead, doing things like zoning changes and actually looking at ADUs. Prepare that. We're actually forty, ten seconds, Jerry? All right. So I, I've got a, a number of things that I just want to put. We are full-time residents in this community. We may not live here full-time. We participate year-round in the town. We're supporting the businesses. We're making contributions. We're volunteering on boards, committees for the town, nonprofits, et cetera. We're active in the chambers. But if I look at it, three points. One, it doesn't work, the RTE. Just look to our outer Cape towns to find out. Province Town instituted the RTE back in twenty-fifteen. Since twenty-fifteen, they've raised it three times. Pearl did it in twenty-seventeen. They've raised their RTE four times. Obviously, something's not working here. Okay? It's further indication that the RTE has been a failure to address the affordable housing and the quantity of housing available to the people who need it most. Secondly, it's not targeted. We already talked about that. I want to hop on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then finally, the last thing is that it creates, and someone already said this, it creates a division in the town, just like we've seen in Province Town.
Time. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Count?
Yeah. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, the board. I, I meant from the public. All right. Thanks, everybody. Thank you all for coming. Oh. You have to, please come up to the microphone. Thank you.
Yep. There's people at home and on Zoom who are watching. Yeah.
Laura Sullivan, thirty Smith Lane. I am for the.
What's the mic now? So you can, so they can hear. We, we want them to, people to be able to hear. Thank you.
Okay. Thirty Smith Lane. Um, I am for the RTE. Uh, I have lived here all my life. I'm just getting done with, um, college shift, the college funding. I don't have to have it, but I would like younger people to have it. And I think it would help them greatly. And I believe that they can't afford it here. And everything has just blown up and it's just way too much. You can't walk down the beach without a sign. Stay off it. I didn't know people own sand, but I guess they do. Uh, I just feel that it's time that Eastham stopped and looked at these people, at the younger generation. I have kids, one son that lives on the Cape, the rest left. Thank you. I'm done. You heard enough?
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you. Right. Anyone else? All right. So we'll end. Was there anyone online that had their hand up? Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. And, uh, so now we'll go ahead and we can discuss it more, um, within the board.
Yeah, I'm going to start with my comment on this being a divisive issue because I always find it a little frustrating that I find it divisive, well, it's a little inherently dividing because it's an issue of class. You have a group of people who possibly only own one home and it's in Eastham and you have a group of people. have a group of people who own multiple properties. And there is always going to be a division there because the economic status is different. So in that way, this will probably always be divisive, and there will always be a divide there because there is a very clear economic divide in those two groups of people. Maybe it doesn't apply to all residents, because we do have residents in town who have multiple properties as well, but there are certainly people in town who just have their one property, and that is it. And I also find it disheartening to receive a letter that, to me, feels like a lack of understanding of the challenges that we face as a community because there are so many vacation units in our town. And the level of vacation units in our town is not neutral, and it's not just a net positive. Like, we have very serious struggles with attracting staff, keeping families here. My only chance of owning a house in this town is if my one remaining parent dies. And even that is not a certain thing. And so this idea of fairness that comes up as well in some of the opposition for people who own more than one property in more than one place, like, I don't feel seen or understood. And it's so frustrating to be like, my best option for having children is to leave my community because I don't have a place to have children. It's not because I don't want to have children. It's because I don't have an appropriate place to have them. And that doesn't feel fair. And I have access to housing. There's people in our community who don't have access to housing. So when I get a letter from people who have more than one property, when my chances of even owning property, like, are out the window, and it's a matter of fairness, like, this, just say you don't want to pay more in taxes. I would much rather just have, you'd be like, I don't want to pay for it. Because the rationale, like, that's what causes division, is like not understanding what everyone's facing all year long. And I don't know what we're going to do when we need to replace Jackie. What are, like, our, our superintendent hides an apartment in Mashpee and doesn't live on Cape. Martha's Vineyard is offering $50,000 bonuses for a firefighter because we have to keep up with the cost of housing. And I don't know what we're going to do. We're like on this edge, and like, we can see it coming, and we're like holding on for now. I'm not entirely sure how, but like, I don't... Yeah.
Thank you, Suzanne.
You're welcome. I think that's, yeah, most of my spiel.
I don't know how many folks attend our meetings or watch them or see what our audience looks like. But I do want to acknowledge, you know, when I look out here tonight, it's a, it's a full audience. And it is one of the first times I've ever seen such a young audience. Ever. And that's hard, especially when you have twins at home, when you have a family, and, and you have to try to get out at 7 o'clock at night and get to a meeting, and you don't know how long it's going to be. Like, that's some powerful stuff that gets you there. It's hard. It's hard for these folks to get here. And they turned out. And like I said, this is the first meeting, and I've been on the board seven years where I've seen this many young people here. So thank you for being here.
Thanks, Jamie. Suzanne?
A little comment.
One more.
No, go ahead. Sorry. Okay. In terms of like doing targeted approaches for people who need help, I, like, we need to acknowledge how hard that is for people. And so I, the point is that you give help, and what people do with it is up to them. And I, I understand that this is a broader stroke, but I don't supermind because when you are, you need assistance, and you look at all these programs, and it's all this paperwork, and you have to get all these finances together, and then you have to make sure that you income-qualify in this, and that's labor. That is your time and your energy and your mental load to have to do that. And that is not like, like, target, 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 and then we still missed the target because we still have people in town who are like, I'm not on the target. And so I have also supported this because it gives a broader stroke for people so you don't have to come up with bank statements and like your pay stubs and your taxes.
Your taxes, you do.
We do.
Do you need your taxes?
We do.
Oh, to show that you live here.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's not, yeah.
Yeah, but
But not the amount.
But you might not need like, you know.
Point taken. All right, point taken, yes.
So I, I'm not super bothered by it being a broad stroke because we do have people who are not included and offering help in a way that is easier and has fewer barriers for it, even if it helps maybe more people who we don't think need it. Yeah, okay.
Jerry?
Yeah. As a young age, I was taught to be fair. Public schools in Meriden, Connecticut, from my kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Kay, to my track coach, Dave Beal, talked about being fair. I went to Wesleyan, and eventually I majored in government. And the big thing that I learned was that the government should try and treat people equally. That's the goal and attempt. I went to UVA Law School, equal justice under law, equal, trying to be things equal. If this RTE were need-based, I would be enthusiastically in favor of it. It just isn't. I have a, you have a house next to me who's a part-time resident, exactly the same as mine, and he's going to pay $1,300 more than I'm going to pay. It's just not fair. But I also have a very personal ethical, and it's my personal ethics problem with RTE. It's Jerry. You want to help people in Eastham in need. We want to keep them here, want them to be able to try and afford their house here and thrive here. Yeah, how do I do that? Well, Jerry, I want you to vote for RTE. And what does that do? Give yourself a tax break and force your neighbor who's a part-time resident to pay for it. We should be paying for it ourselves. We do have the Residential Taxpayer Assistance Fund, and we've talked about it. And I'm going to say this here, it shouldn't, putting $50,000 in it, and a reporter, the Province Town Independent poo-pooed that, and he was 100% correct. It's time to put $300,000 into it. That would cost, if my memory is right from what we had last year with our override for the police officers, that's $48 on the tax bill, $4 a month. We want, if we in Eastham want to help those who need it, stay here, be there, we should be able to afford, pay for it, contribute to it. And if we need more, $300,000 isn't enough. Now, $300,000 would be 3, if 100 people, would $3,000 off of your taxes. But if it's 200 people, it's $1,500 off. And if we need more, because we want to have more, more opportunity, put 400,000 in, put 500,000 in. It's time for us to say, we want to help people, and we're going to do it, and we fund it, and we take responsibility on it. We don't shove it off on others. And in my instance, looking at here and the ethics, my mother would even yell at me more, meaning you're going to force non-voters who can't vote for you or can't vote against you, Jerry, to pay for it? And you're going to help the voters who help, who can put you in office? Just wrong, Jerry. I, I can hear my mother saying that right now, and I'm just not going to be in favor of it. Now, Jamie is always going to be in favor of RTE, and she's right. Our heart's in the right place. We're, we're, we all want the same thing. It's just how we're going to do it. Jamie's always going to vote for it. We could have 99.9% non-resident taxpayers and 0.1% resident taxpayers, and I would still be opposed to the RTE because it is not based on need. And it's about time, if we want to help people, that we come up to the plate and hit it. I do not need the RTE. I don't need it. But I will tell you, I will take it. And I'll give that $800 you give me to a charity that helps people that needs it, not anything that helps someone like me who decided to take it. It's just that simple. It's not right. It's not fair, and I'm opposed to it straight off the bat. But I want to say, I'm going to push to put a warrant article at the town meeting to put at least $300,000 into that fund to help people in this town who are residents who need help on their taxes and give it to them, because that's what we should be doing. Thank you.
Jamie?
Um, thanks, Jerry. Um, you know, I guess, I just, I get, it's hard when you say, I agree that I want to target this to people who need it, but what, what's that line, right? The state says that these people need it, but these people don't. And obviously, that doesn't work here, right? We're missing a huge group of working people. So where does that bar go? Who needs it? The reason our AMI is so high for that program that we're implementing is because right now, pretty much, most working-class individuals in this town need it. Your teachers, your fire, your police, people who work for community groups here, they all need it. They don't need to pay more in their taxes right now, even right now, even if it's $48. I mean, I'm sorry, but that's just how I feel. They, the tax burden on these working individuals, they are the need. And I don't think we can find that bar. I don't think that's going to happen because right now, it's most of them. So I just feel like we're doing a disservice to our constituents. The people who we're up here for are the ones who voted for us. That's, they put us here. That's the reality. That's who put me in this seat. And so that's who I'm representing. And I have heard from them clearly on what their need is. I've heard from residents in Wellfleet, people I went to high school with at NOSA that tell me, wow, I got that, the RTE exemption, and it showed it on my tax bill, and I thought, God, what a relief. I just had someone do that this month. And they said, I can't believe Eastham hasn't done that yet. And she looked right at me, and it was embarrassing. I'm like, I can't believe we haven't either. I don't, like, I don't know what to tell her. I'm very glad she finds relief. But I think that the need is pretty widespread right now.
All right. I want a couple of points Jerry brought up that I'd like to talk about. Yeah, the fairness issue is a, an issue for me also, but not quite as extreme as, as Jerry's. Because my, my initial thought, when we first started talking about this five, six years ago, was, you know, that a higher percentage is when something like this really is more effective, it's more fair to implement it. I suggested wait till we get 75, 25, but I, I understand that we don't want to ever get there. We don't want to ever get that high. So we made a threshold, a policy, four years ago, I believe now, that if we hit 60, 40, two years in a row...
It was before COVID.
Yeah, so five years.
Yeah.
That January before.
Yeah.
Yeah. So five years, yeah. You know, if we hit 60, 40, two years in a row, then we would implement the exemption. And since we haven't really moved at all since then, I'm going to stick to not implementing it yet. Doesn't mean it's off the table forever. But I really, you know, I think the impact is much greater when you have a different percentage. It's a little more fair. And I know people are struggling, and I'm totally with Jerry in that we need to put more money in that. Hopefully, we'll get more donations from people to boost that fund so it won't cost taxpayers much. Hopefully, the transfer fees will somehow get resurrected.
Yeah, please write your state officials on that one.
We have a new representative, Hadley Luddy. Hopefully, get her in here at some point, you know, this year, and, and write to them and ask them to implement that because that, on a transfer of a sale, is the time when, when we could really, you know, that's how the Cape Cod Commission is funded, right? On, on property tax sales. So their whole budget, just about, is, is transfer tax fees. Yeah. So, I mean, there are ways to raise this money without taking it from some taxpayers and giving it to others. But I appreciate your, both of you, your passion and your, you know, desire to help people that, that really need it and...
I read another comment.
Let, I'm gonna let Bob say something first.
Yeah.
Well, I don't have much, I mean, I don't have much to add. It's, I mentioned earlier, I really do like a targeted approach. I don't necessarily think that this program, you know, the RTE or the Community Fund, even upping it to 300,000, which I think is a good idea, I don't think that's going to solve the housing problem. I don't think this is anything unique to Eastham. So, and I do appreciate the fact that we've got a limited number of tools in the toolbox. But I don't ethically get on board with pulling money from one people to give it to another when there's no real benefit to the town. There's no more money. It's not like we're adding any more to the bottom line. We're just hurting some people to help others. And some of those people don't need it. Some of them do. Some of them really do. And, you know, I don't, I don't buy the argument that, you know, there's too much paperwork to, to get involved. Where do you buy a house? I mean, then you're going to start learning about the paperwork. It's endless. But I, I do think that we should probably be looking in, in the, in the direction of, in my opinion, fairness, which to me is not, you know, pulling from one group, helping one group and hurting another at the same time. I just don't, I just don't get into it. I think if we have an option to target the people who need this the most, I think we ought to go for that play. And I think we ought to play it hard and see how it works out.
Suzanne, I'm going to go to, if someone has their hand up, we're going to go let them speak their piece and...
Amy James, you've, on the meeting.
Hi, sorry, I wish I could be there in person. I wasn't aware that this meeting was happening, and it is bedtime for my daughter, who I'm entertaining with TV. But I just wanted to throw my support in. I'm, I'm relatively new to Eastham. I bought a house at 80 Miggs Lane, and I have a young daughter, and I'm a year-round hard worker at a nonprofit here on Outer Cape. And I, I think it's just, the main thing that I'm hearing is talking about fairness and what is equal. And I think it's really important for us to be able to also talk about what's equitable for, for young people that are facing what they face out here on the Outer Cape. It's very hard to find high enough-paying work and to afford daycare for two parents to be able to work to afford a mortgage out here. It's, it's really difficult, and I am highly supportive of the, of the RTE. And instead of talking about what's equal and what's fair, let's talk about how we got to this position. And that has to do with making things more equitable across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And since you have small children, I don't know if you're, she's still there?
She's still in the meeting.
Okay. If you would follow up with our, our town administration and look into the family support package that has benefits for preschool and, and daycare for even younger.
Yeah.
Benefits for the town. So, thank you, Amy. Anything else?
One item? Someone had said, just to show you where my position is, someone said, this is a, you know, a trial, put it in. The problem with it is that I would probably never, if it's in, I'd never vote to take it back because it would be a two-by-four in the face to, in tax increases to the, to the full-time residents. So this is, the, the issue for me, one of the issues with RTE is, it's in, it's going to stay in because you can't, if you, the backtrack would be just a huge tax increase to residents.
because you can't, if you, the backtrack would be just a huge uh tax increase to residents.
One more thing, Suzanne?
Yeah, I'll try. Maybe, yeah. Um, so I, it's to speak a little bit to Jerry and to a little bit of some of the comments that we get. And it's kind of more of like a abstract, not abstract, but um voting used to be, you had to be a property owner and a white one and a dude, a white dude who owned property. Like, that's the history of voting. And so I also need to push back against the oh, well, this is taxation without representation. Well, I'm not allowed to vote there or, and that's not the point. We are, you have enough privilege and enough money to have property in more than one place. That does not mean you get to have more say in more than one place because you have the money and privilege to do so. Like, I understand that corporations can buy elections, but at a local level, I would hope that we can all still agree that you get one person, one vote in your one place. And regardless of how much money you have to invest in other places.
Agreed.
We are, and the fair thing will drive me up the wall because you're talking about a demographic of people who have more than one property and because one is a vacation unit, it has taken that housing unit out of the market for someone to live in full-time.
A lot of the people that are here right now, actually.
So the fairness is like, okay, well, there's people without houses and you have more than one house. That, that, that doesn't seem fair. Okay, I think I am done.
All right. Everybody ready to cast a vote? All right, so all those, since it's just, this is not binding, it's, you know, just consensus for. So all those in favor of implementing an RTE?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed of implementing an RTE? So that's, so far, that's your, come August, it could all change.
Moving forward, we keep seeing NOSA graduates that are able to be up here too.
Sure, yeah, I think you're right.
Well, just be ready for my warrant for three hundred thousand dollars.
I'm sure the people that can't afford their tax bill are not gonna appreciate that right now.
Because they're gonna get fifteen hundred dollars off their taxes.
All right, thank you everyone for coming tonight. We really appreciate your comments and
and we do have our meetings, so if we could.
What's next?
It is, yeah, it's you, so.
Anyone who's gonna leave, try and leave quickly without comment because we have, still have a meeting going on. Sorry.
All right, I'm gonna step out in the hallway.
Yeah.
Yes, Colleen.
Okay. We're doing, Willie's. Amy has recused herself on our next item on the agenda. It is a uh public hearing. Let me read the announcement. The town of Eastham will hold the public hearing at five thirty PM Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty-five at Eastham Town Hall in the Pearl Mountain Room, twenty-five hundred State Highway and by remote participation on the proposed alteration of premises for Willie's World Wellness Conference Center, doing business as Willie's Gym and Fitness Center, located at four, three, set, four, seven, three, zero State Highway in Eastham. Uh, and the, the link to join this meeting will be published as part of the agenda. Uh, but, uh, butter notices were mailed on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. A legal ad was placed in the Provincetown Independent on December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. So let's call the uh public hearing to order. Before we get to Barbara on this, uh, this was on our agenda last meeting and we postponed it. There were some issues and so I think I'd like to turn to Jackie and tell us uh a little bit of what's up on the checklist that we had a discussion about last, um, last meeting.
In terms of this public hearing, it is on an alteration of premises. It is not an external alteration. It, it required some changes, but basically if I can represent um the owner, basically just, we're move, she's moving the bar and restaurant food service area backwards to an, a location that it has been in before, prior to, which is directly adjacent to the kitchen. That's the adjustment in premises. She's not increasing the number of seats or the intensity of use.
Thank you. Um, Barbara, do you have anything you want to, to say? This, if you didn't, it's, it, I'm not forcing you. This is, I'm not forcing you. Okay. I, I have one question and then I'll go to the one question on the application here, talking about the change of premises on the occupancy of premises and you have the landlord's name and then uh the email and so forth. Can you, I, can you explain that to me? Oh, can you come up, can you please come up and just? Oh, that's not the name of, the landlord's name is not the name of an individual. Okay, I couldn't read it. It's the name of.
A corporation.
Corporation. You have answered my, my question. Thank you. Anybody have any, uh, anything they would like to uh say, questions or anything to?
Just procedural question.
Procedural, yes.
Are we gonna, can we vote on these individually?
We're going to vote, this one here is, this public hearing is only on the change, the alteration of the premises. That's all it is. And then, once we've finished with that, we will vote on that. Then we will go to the, the licensing, okay?
So it's a vote on the alteration of premise and then we go to common Vic, all alcohol, billiards and entertainment?
Yes.
Okay.
And entertainment's new, so I'd do the first three and then the second.
Second.
I'd, I'd still like to break them up as four separate, if that's possible.
Oh, sure.
That's fine.
Great.
Uh, okay, any any other member of the public have anything to say on just the alteration of the premises? Number one, anyone else on the board? Do I hear a motion to uh accept the alteration of premises for Willie's World?
I, I move that, that we accept the number two alteration of premises for paragraph in the amendment or change premises of information application.
Here's a second.
Second?
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Oh, wait a second. Excuse me, I have made an error. I will now close the public hearing. Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Does there any further discussion on the board?
The approving the
This is just.
The change of premises doesn't interact. Yeah, it doesn't interact with the septic inspection or health.
No.
Right, it's just not.
All right, then, yeah.
Any further? Okay, we'll go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Four, zero. Okay, now we'll move on to the next licensing uh on Willie's Wellness, Willie's World Wellness Conference Center. The common victor, well, you wanted them separate, so let's go with the common victor.
And just for the board's um information, Susan Barker, so we have issued a temporary food permit as of January first.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Any uh questions on that? Do I have a motion to approve the common vicular uh license for uh Willie's World Wellness Conference Center?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, go to a vote. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The common victor.
Great.
Common victor, that's okay, four, zero, that's been approved. And the second item is the all alcohol on premise license. Anyone have any
So.
questions or comments on that? Bart, uh, Jackie?
This one was, one of the reasons we deferred it was because that permission wasn't, hadn't been granted, hadn't been accepted by the ABCC. The ABCC has received the registration form and the payment. They are now waiting for your decision and so there, there is currently no violation.
Jamie, sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
You're only right next to me.
So um with alcohol licenses, alcohol on premise consumption, it's one of the few duties of the board to vote on those and to make decisions about who in town is allowed the responsibility to serve alcohol to people who come through Eastham. Um, and it's incredibly important. It's serious. It's, you know, um, it is um one of the few things I think that we do that is incredibly weighted and I I guess I take pause on this because I take it seriously with businesses in town when they are serving alcohol and when I repeatedly see a business who's been in town for decades um stumble when it comes to alcohol and how it is handled on their premise. I am reluctant to issue those licenses because I fear for the safety of our staff, our residents and people that go through the establishment and consume alcohol or you know, anyone that could potentially be in that situation. You know, people, we require people to prove their responsibility and we expand their ability to do different things in town. And I feel like I keep getting disproved repeatedly and so for that reason, I'm reluctant to approve an all alcohol license at this property.
Is this a new application?
No. But there, but it had to be paused. It's a renewal for the alcohol.
Any other? Hey, do I hear a motion to uh?
Oh, yeah, I have a little bit more question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, go, I'm, Bob, sorry.
Does the application hours of serving alcohol, if we change that, does that do anything to your opinion ju- uh at all, or are we really just saying yes or no regardless of when there's a a, a, a serving time? I think this was, was it, looking around for the page, was it like five in the morning?
Yeah, it says five AM.
To seven PM. If we, if we change those hours, does that?
Those aren't the all alcohol.
Those are not the hours.
What were the hours? I'm losing it in the.
I believe they said eleven thirty or twelve o'clock. I, I'm not looking at it right now. We close at nine o'clock at night.
So ten AM to eleven PM for restaurant, all alcohol?
No, that's.
I have proposed hours of liquor sales. Five thirty AM is crossed out and it has ten AM to eleven PM.
We don't even open the restaurant until eleven thirty.
That's what it says on the application.
So you can set those as you vote. So you could do eleven o'clock or eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty?
To ten o'clock?
We close at nine, but you know, ten would be fine.
Restaurant hours again?
Eleven thirty.
To?
Nine.
Restaurant closes at nine?
We actually close the kitchen at eight, but.
So that's one.
The alcohol would need to stop being served. It should match the restaurant hours, right?
Well, what we usually do is we have the owner agree that if alcohol is being served, food needs to be served. That is the deal that we've made with every establishment that serves alcohol.
Okay, so I guess I would like the hours on this to be the eleven thirty to eight to reflect the restaurant hours because.
May I make?
Barbara?
Yes, I'd like to say something. So we do close the kitchen this time of year at eight o'clock, but in the summer, we may stay open until nine because that's when we actually close the facility. So.
I would do, I would ask for the hours that you want right now.
So I don't believe we want to serve alcohol anytime before eleven thirty in the morning and I don't even think we ever have. And we've had this license since two thousand and two. We have a thirty-four seat restaurant. And so I think eleven thirty to nine, when we're open, is you know, whenever the club is open, I think that those are reasonable hours.
Suzanne?
We have that provision for food should be served and I understand that there's a seasonal variation in that, but if the kitchen is closed.
Then we would not serve alcohol.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering how we would handle that in the application so that that's clear because we don't make that allowance for.
It can be written on the license.
Okay.
Right, we can do, do the license that um it's eight, eleventh, not eight thirty, excuse me.
Eleven thirty to nine.
To nine uh for, provided that the kitchen is open those hours and, or something.
Food is available.
Food is, food is available, as long as food is available. How about that? That, that you, so you, the license would be eleven thirty AM to nine PM as long as food is available.
It just seems a little concrete and loose and the properties.
Barbara, we have a menu. Did you provide a menu?
Uh, I didn't.
On your.
There is a menu in here, at least I thought.
I mean, we do have, there is always food available at the, there's, there's bar food at the bar, there's.
I think we're just asking for the menu because we require everybody else to provide one.
Yeah, we do.
I absolutely understand that.
Thought it was in there. I thought it was large. I did see it at some point.
I'm just saying that that's, you know, if the menu is available and the business is open, that's, food is available, right? That's the definition of food is available. The menu is available for people to purchase. It's not like a a can of snack mix. That's what Jamie's had issues with in the past and I agree with her.
Right, right. Yeah, I just.
We had the same discussion with Carolins and with several other restaurants.
Everybody else.
Everyone else.
And, well, yeah, and there's tends to be viol- the, things come up with this particular property and so the ambiguity um of leaving it a little open.
Put it on the license.
Okay.
All right. So, we're gonna, so what we're looking for is, would be a motion to.
Jerry?
Hello?
Public at all?
This is liquor.
We, no.
Why would we give the letters to come?
This was about the building. This was about the.
That was about the building and only about the altering.
Alteration of the building. That was the public hearing.
That was the public hearing. Yeah. Right, right, because it's, that's right. Okay, sorry, but that's.
Entertainment is, is after billiards, so that's a different license.
Different license.
Well, he's wondering if he can comment on that, I think.
On, on.
That's a new license, not a renewal, so, yeah, yeah, at that time.
At that time, it's, we're not there yet, but I, I'll, I'll remember.
So you want a motion to approve the all alcohol on premises for the hours of eleven thirty AM to close so long as the kitchen.
Nine PM.
To nine PM. To nine PM, so long as the kitchen is open.
Menu is available.
Menu is available, kitchen is open.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, three, one. All right. Uh, the next is the billiards license for Willie's World Wellness Conference Center.
And this is also.
This is a renewal. As well, uh, any questions or anything on that? All right, do we have a motion to approve that?
I move we approve the billiards license.
Wait a second.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Little vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four, zero. Now, we are on the end. Four, zero. Now we are on the entertainment licenses, the new application for the entertainment license. And Barbara, I think first, what's your plan on the entertainment that you have here?
Frankly, you know, non-acoustic, possibly, a good friend of mine is Sarah Burrell would, you know, play for a couple of hours for like the women's social on a Friday night. We were looking for maybe a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, something like that. You know, we have some members who have, they have a trio that like to play. Nothing, we're not, I don't want to be a nightclub. I don't want to work more hours. I want, I, something very simple, something very soothing, something that would make my members happy.
All right, so you're really looking for, what, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
I'll be honest, Jerry, I'm not gonna do something Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I don't think I, you know, I am asking for those days so that I can possibly have something on a Friday, possibly have something on a Sunday afternoon. We close at six o'clock on Saturdays and Sundays.
Right.
And I'm grateful for that. So we're not looking for something that's, you know, big. I'm not looking for big bands. I'm not looking for anything like that. We're a thirty-four seat restaurant. It's a lovely space. If you haven't come in to see it, it's really nice. The members are very happy with it, but they would like once in a while to, you know, be able to sit there and, and listen to some nice music.
Okay, so would you, listeners, would you look at it? What, what times would?
We, we're only open until nine o'clock on Friday. And Saturday and Sunday we're open until six. Thursday we're open until Friday. I, I'm not, I don't want it to stay open later.
I understand. Where would you like?
Keep it simple. So like.
What would you like to start? I mean, what, what, what are we looking, what I'm trying to do is see if we can get a motion to get, what, just what you need.
Say probably, you know, a Friday night, you know, you have women's social two to four.
Take a step back. So the whole purpose of having an entertainment license is so she doesn't have to come back each time she wants to have something. So honestly, if we're gonna do this, I would suggest that you do it, you know, Thursday through Sunday for the same hours. Even if she's closing at six, give it till nine because you can and she doesn't have to use it. But if she wants to do something from six to nine, she could, and she wouldn't have to come back and ask permission.
Jamie?
I was just gonna say that there is the option though, if this, if a entertainment license is not passed, that you can come back and get individual licenses for events as you choose to have them.
Yes, but as, as she's trying to do something once a week, say on a variable day.
Oh, I'm just, I'm asking because like I said, and we do this with every other business in town, is people kind of step into different roles in the town. And as they prove that they're capable of being good stewards of certain things, then they expand what they offer in their businesses as it becomes evident that it's working. And if it becomes evident that it is not, then backtrack and reevaluate and redo. And so when I look at this application, I see five thirty A M. to eleven P M. Monday through Friday, seven A M. to eleven P M. Saturday, Sunday. Music, karaoke, magicians for kids' parties, face painting. So it's different than what I'm hearing. And so for that reason, I lean toward the idea of individual entertainment licenses because I don't think I have a clear picture on exactly what is being asked for. And so when that kind of situation comes up, I think it makes more sense to treat each entertainment event as its own thing so that there's clear parameters on it.
May I say something?
Yes, Barbara.
I was asked when I, you know, what type of things could you imagine doing under an entertainment license? And I put in face painting for the kids' parties. Not that I think that is, falls under necessarily entertainment. But if we had to come back because a parent wanted to have a magician at the party or face painting, then we're gonna have to pass that cost on to each party. And we're, we pride ourselves in having really inexpensive parties so kids can have three or four hours there for their birthday and just use the facilities. I would find it kind of, you know, difficult to have to come back every time we want to do face painting or something like that. And I'm not even sure that follows under that parameter, but you could tell me if it does or doesn't. I'm, I mostly was looking at, as an example, we have a pickleball women's social Friday from two to four. And from four to six, it would be nice to have Sarah come and play. The ladies like to come in, they like to sit and chat. And that, that's the kind of thing I'm looking for, not looking for anything outrageous.
I mean, I, I agree. I think that's a lovely plan. But the risk that the board takes in approving a blanket entertainment license is it does open the gates for any type of entertainment. And that is the issue. That it's not that I don't think that the plan is a lovely plan. It's just that.
So we've clarified though, Jamie, that we are not, the board's not entertaining five thirty in the morning till eleven at night. We've, we've re clarified that we're talking about Thursday through Sunday from eleven
Thirty or eleven?
To nine, or eleven thirty to nine, yeah.
Right, I mean, would you change your application to reflect that or resubmit a change?
Whatever the board wants.
Whatever you vote on will be on the license.
Okay.
I, I won't be having anything.
Right, we, we would do it conditionally then.
So I know the gentleman in the back wanted to say something, so we'll give you an opportunity. You state your name and your address and then the floor is yours.
Yes, Norman Steuben, fifty-six story lane. I came this evening because what I received in the mail didn't say was the entertainment going to be inside or outside? And so if anything's gonna be outside, we certainly will hear it. You know, when the.
Not outside.
When I hear the swans at four o'clock in the morning, don't ask me where they come from and they wake me up. I don't need anything more late at night.
Right, the application says it's inside.
It's inside.
So it's, it would not be, it would not be allowed outside on, on this license, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and comments. Well, oh, yes. Yes, you may.
Beverly Hobbs, one ninety Sparrow Hawk Lane. Could we, she's mentioning everything that she says is acoustic. I was wondering.
Non-acoustic, I said.
I'm sorry?
I said non-acoustic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said amplified.
No amplified music.
So that's acoustic. That would be acoustic.
It's acoustic. Okay.
If we could limit it to acoustic, I live pretty close by.
St. Okay.
My dogs will wake me up.
Yeah. Barbara, your thoughts on that? Is it acoustic? Is that?
So there would be no amplified music?
It's just.
Well.
I'm asking.
For a fact that, I, I, I don't know, Sarah does have an amplifier that she plays off of when she's, she's got a microphone, you know?
I, I don't think.
It's not a.
It's like a boombox.
Yeah.
I don't think that qualifies. Hers doesn't, her setup doesn't.
We're talking about like that.
No, 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 no. I'm almost seventy years old. I don't want to hear it either.
Understand.
Um, Jerry, we have.
Yes, another? Oh, please, Jim.
I think you're like right behind a pillar.
I'm like.
Trying to hide behind the pillar.
Jim Russo, one forty Massasoit. I think that amplified should be fine. The decibels is what, what's the concern? When, if they can have music at other places that are close to residential area.
We actually don't allow amplified music in most other places.
Ever, anywhere?
Anywhere.
Okay, then that, then that's the deal. If that's the way it is for everybody in town, then, then that's fine.
The closest we came was Carolyn's and we had.
We tried it.
Again, we had a lot of complaints from a butters. But that was also the summer season. The windows are open. They didn't have air conditioning. It's a very different setting.
I just think given the, the business climate and how difficult it is to operate a business in this community, in Eastham in particular, that whatever leeway we can give to, to give an operator the opportunity to move around and, and change things up as they see need, as they see fit, so long as it complies with the rules of the town.
Right.
It shouldn't be such a problem. And that I, I encourage you to allow her to have this.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Yes.
So far.
Dave Hobbs, one ninety Sparrow Hawk Lane. I was wondering if we can limit the number of people. I don't want five hundred people flooding that place and.
Oh. There's thirty-four seats. There's an.
Is it limited to the thirty-four seats? Can you have standing people?
There's only thirty-four seats. That, I'm only limited to, I'm limited to thirty-four seats.
Okay, how about the standing crowd?
You guys shouldn't be talking.
For Jerry, yeah.
Talk to the chairman.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
All right, so you're concerned that it would be a mob seat? All right.
Like a.
Sarah could draw a crowd.
A huge, a huge crowd. I understand. Barbara, you're, I, I understand it's, all the application looks at thirty-four seats. And I know that, you know, people could go into the tennis courts, I guess, but thirty-four seats? And that's where you're, that's where you're, you're looking for the entertainment?
It's limited and, and I want to use it in the restaurant again.
Uh huh, okay.
So would you limit the license to thirty?
It already is. It already is.
It is, yeah.
Oh, it is limited to thirty-four.
Well, she can't do it in other areas of the building. So she can't do entertainment in the downstairs.
Okay.
Training areas.
Thirty-four people?
Yeah, well, no, no, thirty-four seats. It here, section three says, second floor restaurant area consisting of a counter and adjacent seating areas, two stairways to lower level and one main entrance exit. Total capacity, thirty-four seats.
So how many people?
About thirty-four seats. I guess you can't have more than thirty-four.
That's what I want to know. And I agree with that because this place you have thirty-four seats and you could have a hundred people standing here. If it's thirty-four people, I'm fine.
So is, so that means the license is limited?
Yeah, yeah, well, the, the license in the application says thirty-four seats. That's what, that's what it's gonna be.
So that's thirty-four people?
I, I guess so. The way they count. Well, you have staff too, but yes.
Okay, I don't mind the staff, but you're talking thirty-four people.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right. Barbara, I think that's what you said.
That's, that's correct, Jerry.
So to recap, we've got Thursday through Sunday, eleven thirty to nine, unless you want to do less, and acoustic.
Acoustic.
Non-amplified.
Provided food is, is, you know, being served.
No.
No, no, that's the alcohol.
No, she can have, she can have entertainment without food or alcohol.
But it is convenient to have the license match up with the other ones.
Exactly.
It sure would.
That would make it easier because, you know, the more, it's harder to follow if we have more.
So.
You get to say something. Doesn't mean that you, you have the final say, Barbara, but go ahead. Anything on that? If, if we match what we did on the alcohol, all alcohol premises license? Except this would be Thursday.
Sunday.
Or Sunday, not.
Thursday through Sunday, yes.
All right.
That, that works.
All right. Any other, just Suzanne, you, you, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm so sorry.
You don't have to be sorry.
We did, we did the all alcohol. I, I know you said you didn't want to be open past six on the weekend.
No, 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 we're gonna stick, we, we went back to nine. We're keeping the hours the same, right?
Okay, but it would.
Every day.
So, but then there would be a potential on Saturday and Sunday when she normally closes at six to be open. She wouldn't be open until nine to do events.
Yes.
And serve alcohol and food.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the alcohol, the alcohol license is, goes through nine provided there's, provided the menu is open, kitchen's open, there's food. And this would be to mirror, mirror it except for it just being Thursday through Sunday.
Okay.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah, I think that's, that's agreeable there. Jamie, you want to say something? Did you, did you raise your hand? I, I, I'm not trying to force you to say anything.
No, I know. I guess, yeah, I guess I just still, I struggle because I just feel like, again, we do this in steps with most businesses as they prove their ability to responsibly handle certain responsibilities in the town. And I just feel like application for individual entertainment events makes more sense.
Okay. Do I, do I hear a motion to, whoop, go ahead.
I, I guess, I just don't, I don't think that this is a space that we, we should be expanding liberties at this point. And that's what this would be.
Right. Well, let's start with a motion and we have further discussion if we want. Do we have a motion to approve the entertainment license for Willie's World Wellness Conference Center from Thursday through Sunday from eleven thirty to to nine, eleven thirty A M. to nine P M. In the restaurant with a seating capacity of thirty-four.
For acoustic music.
For acoustic music only.
Acoustic music.
So moved.
Second, wait a second.
Oh, second.
I'll say, okay, so now we can have discussion. Any further discussion?
I, I'm sensitive to the, I mean, she can make whatever hours that she wants, right? Because I don't, I'm.
Absolutely not. The license says eleven thirty to nine.
No, I'm saying because the Saturday and Sunday, the butters are used to it being closed at six. And I just wanted to be sensitive to adding potentially traffic and commotion during a ti- time period that is normally quiet for the butters. Because that is what I, if I have gathered anything from listening to planning board meetings, it is when you change something like that, that sometimes it causes a disruption. And I just wanted to.
But that's why it's acoustic and it's a closed environment and our noise bylaws don't even kick in at those times.
But I also think that the letter that went out to the butters at a time that was much broader than Thursday through Sunday, eleven thirty A M. to nine P M. And I think we've had one butter come in, discuss that and he's.
Well, I think what happens is when it's, when the notice goes out, it's very simple. It does not, it doesn't say anything. That's the problem. It just says change in premise.
Oh.
Okay.
It doesn't say anything specific. So, oh, we did have some people call and ask. And when we told them what it was, they were like, oh.
But they've all, they were all notified.
I will, I will to Jamie, Jamie does make a good point is that it is a very interesting thing to add an entertainment license immediately following a number of violations. And they have been remedied, but it's not without, no.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Yes, of course.
Go ahead.
I, I have to tell you that I did contact, before I moved that bar fifty feet, I contacted the building inspector, who would be the person I would talk to about doing that. I contacted him also about opening up the entrance. And I was given permission thinking, and, and he has admitted that. So I believed that I did what I needed to do. When Suzie came in, then she told me she wanted a three bay sink. She wanted a hand sink. She wanted an ice machine and she wanted new refrigeration, all which has been done before her deadline, actually. And tomorrow is the septic system inspection, which I am sure it will pass. We have not had any problems with our septic system. I'm just saying that, I, I'm hearing what you're saying, Jamie. I think it's unfair. I think that you're, there's a lot of judgment here and that I have been, everything the town has asked me to do, I have done. And I've done some things twice when they've asked me to do things. I've done even more. So at this point, I, I really believe that I've proven myself and to sit here and have to listen again to this, I'd like not to.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor that has been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, three, one. And I think that ends, that will go on to other licenses, but I'm going to have to find Amy someplace to.
Okay.
Get her, you know, she's, all right. We will just hold for a second while we get the chair back.
Oh, where is she?
Jamie's gonna go get her. We will.
She probably went home. She probably went home, it's been a long time.
This was a tough meeting. I apologize for talking too much.
I don't.
You didn't talk too much.
I make no apologies.
You're alright, Susan. Keep smiling.
I think you guys are great.
Okay, guys, we're gonna move forward with the meeting, so if you could take the discussion out in the hallway.
We appreciate it, and I will, uh, well, I think we still have a plumb, should I just get going? Should I go or wait for?
Um, let's wait a second and then go.
Amy, just gonna use the bathroom and find Amy. I'm back and everybody's leaving.
There she is.
Alright.
All yours.
There's something wrong with the bathroom fan in the men's room.
In the men's room?
It's making a loud noise.
Oh my god, and then it kicks off, and then it immediately starts back up. I had to close the door, cuz it was so loud in the hallway, I went upstairs and read the bulletin board for a while, cuz it was so bad.
Okay.
Alright.
We're on, uh.
We're on to licensing.
Be, be through it.
Let's do, uh, since Jamie's out of the room, let's do the chocolate cafe.
Chocolate cafe, with Jamie is accusing herself.
Yeah. Proves the common pick for common chocolate cafe.
Fine, I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four to zero.
Four to zero. Okay.
Get her out there.
Now we'll do, uh, oh.
She's not back yet, but that's, that's okay. Um, we can, we can do the rest without her, it's alright. Uh, so we'll do Connors Car Care Auto Dealership License, Advanced Equipment Auto Dealer License, um, Inn at the Oaks, Common Victular, Royal Thai Cuisine, Common Victular.
I move that we approve, uh,
Sleep.
those licenses.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four to zero.
Well, Jamie's here.
She's gone. We just did all the licensing.
B, C, E, and F.
Okay, oh, you did the one, great, yeah.
You, you, you can vote.
Great.
Yes.
Oh, approved, uh, aye.
You.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay. So on B, C, E, and F, Jamie was an aye. So that's five to zero.
Five to zero, yep.
Alright. Administrative matters, there's Paul, our lone.
What's Paul doing here?
He's here for Discussion of Zoning Task Force slash Nantucket case.
Oh, Paul, you didn't have to be here for that.
He's here now, here he is.
Alright, I'm very sorry.
He slid in, not.
I mean, it wasn't boring.
No, no, it wasn't.
Also, when I went to look at our agenda, we have another agenda for this month.
Yes, next Monday.
No, in the library.
Okay, let's, let's do one thing at a time. I'm sorry, I don't mean to sound chastisey, but we gotta get going.
Okay.
Okay, let's go. Seven forty-four.
What page is this?
What are we on?
We're on.
Discussion of Zoning Task Force slash Nantucket case.
Jamie needed to run something by you.
Where is it, where is it? I can't find it in here now.
It's number five, Discussion of Zoning Task Force slash Nantucket case.
There's something in the packet?
No, it was you said, basically.
Okay.
Oh, that's not Paul?
No, it's not Paul, it's Jamie wanting the zoning task force to take a look at the Nantucket case and make some recommendations.
Yeah, I'm just gonna pull up that email so I can.
I'm so sorry, Jamie.
Oh, no, that's okay, I just wanna make sure that I.
Okay.
That's why I jumped to the thing, because I thought Paul was gonna.
No.
I thought it was related.
Sorry, I thought it was in the packet, in the bag.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I will find it, it will happen. Might just take a second.
You want me to babble while you're?
Maybe.
So basically, the town of Nantucket.
Oh, I got it.
Okay, she's found it.
Yes, I sent it to you, oh my god, the eve of Christmas Eve, sorry. Um, okay, so I had sent out an email with just some things that I wanted to um, bring up, and I think, Paul, you had responded, um.
And we set up a meeting with Mary Ne, so basically it was.
Okay.
Regarding that Nantucket case that determined that short-term rentals were actually a business use in a residential area. So, that's still in, is it in the appeals process now somewhere? Anyway, Jamie was very interested in some of those items that the, the, that the Nantucket boards are looking at to try and come to some kind of meeting of the minds to restrict some short-term rental times and dates and
Yeah.
activity without banning it entirely.
Right, restrictions on the number of short-term rental turnovers in a calendar year, um, restrictions on the accepted window of short-term rentals, example, Memorial Day to Labor Day, um, exterior lighting guidelines, as one does not exist. Um, there was some things, an issue about noise amendments.
Looking at the noise bylaw.
To the existing noise bylaw, um, an amendment to existing regulation on accessory uses to address growing intensity, such as like pickleball courts on people's properties and tennis courts and the those types of things, um, so looking at those, um, and I also included, um, about, uh, with regard to both new construction and renovations, it's become evident that the planning board would appreciate clearer guidelines, quantifying community character as it relates to structure size, and this, this is okay to go forward with, there was an adjustment on this, right, Paul? What I wrote, okay, so, um, the belief, I, it's my belief in several other people, that a formula needs to be generated to calculate average neighborhood size, along with a definition, like a percentage definition of growth, so an absolute limit of growth that would define community character. So in addition to the zoning restrictions that we passed at town meeting, that we're running into issues where, even though someone might be allowed to build a four thousand square foot house based on the property size, it's still wildly out of character with its neighborhood, and so how do you quantify that? And so one of the things we talked about was, um, a formula to quantify that, and probably.
And basically, the zoning task force is your instrument, I mean, you created it as a, as a body that does deep dives for you in, in zoning and makes recommendations to you, and Mary, as the chairman, is basically, was basically asking Jamie to, um, sort of poll the board, and if this is something that you're interested in moving forward with, they will take it on once they've finished their current zoning burden.
I just wanted to clarify a couple things, um, the issue on Nantucket, it went through a court case, and it was determined that, as Jackie said, that uh, commercial use of the residential property is not permitted, but as a, as a principle of use, but it is as an accessory use.
Uh huh.
Nantucket has been trying to do a number of things with their general and zoning bylaw. Um, I talked to the planner over there a couple weeks ago, nothing has passed, so they've had a lot of stuff come up, but, but in looking at what they've tried to put together, that's where a lot of the ideas we were kicking around is, you know, can we address these things with intensity of use, so just to say like, nothing's passed on Nantucket, but there's a lot of ideas being generated, and I think a lot of them, we could look at, is it appropriate for Eastham, and then on the community character thing, um, item, we established site coverage limits in the zoning bylaw a couple years ago. You know, when you start to put these things into practice, it looks good on paper, but then it's still very subjective, and we're trying to get, it's never gonna be completely objective. But in looking at, how does the board approach these things, and the, the idea of, we have a site coverage limit, but maybe putting in a percentage of allowable growth so, so that you don't have in a neighborhood where it's predominantly small cottages and, you know, modest ranch houses, and then somebody wants to upgrade that, and the first house in wants to do a giant renovation, and then that kind of set, so they might be under the site coverage, but they're way beyond what the rest of the house, uh, neighborhood is, so you kind of set a new level, so the discussion there was a tool might be, let's put in some sort of percentage increase, and that gives the planning board something more objective, it's never gonna be totally perfect, but it's just something, just, at least you can rationalize that to say, we're not, you know, you're, cuz everyone is gonna now be under the limit, but above what they have, cuz everyone's trying to expand a little bit, so these are just, that's an idea that we wanted to explore, so as an example.
I don't have any problem with agreeing to, the, the one thing, I wanna make sure that it doesn't interfere with the zoning task force producing what's needed for town meeting on May fifth, that, that's all, I mean, these are, these are questions, I think, that are important ones, that are gonna come up, you're when you have something new, you always eventually, you can tweak them as it goes along, you find a problem, but we, we need to make sure that the focus stays on May fifth, and what we need to have in the, in the warrant.
And I think Mary was fairly frank with us, that she did not foresee that they would be able to
To do everything.
To do everything, so that they were more than happy to look at it, but that they will finish the form-based code, or at least get it to town meeting, and then start working.
Yeah, and so whatever can be kind of bit off will be, and, you know, but that, they know the direction of the board.
I think knowing, it's helpful for me and Mary to, working with the task force, to know like, what's, this is gonna be for next year anyways, but what's, what's the agenda for next year, so that we know, you know, for the staffing of the task forces, does everyone wanna stay on board, is everyone stamina there, do we need to get new folks in, you know, cuz this board, as, that group, as you know, is until I, and Bob was a key member of it, there's a lot of time they put in, and it's, you know, it's technical works, and I always tip my cap to them, none of this would be doing, getting done if we didn't have that solid group, but we wanna be able to say, this is what we're looking at, this is the list of things, is everyone on board, or?
Yeah.
Do, you know, and we, then we can plan accordingly.
Well, this is important, I mean, that, if that court case gets approved one hundred percent, we have some issues at Eastham, I'm looking at, uh, how, what we're going to do, so this is important, this is an important step next one, and I know we, you do have to wait for the, the final appeals, but that takes time, but we have to be ready to hit the ground running.
And the more we learn from, I think, the surrounding communities, the better position Eastham is in.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's interesting, they mentioned the accessory use.
It's great, right?
Yeah, because.
That really does define a business, if it's your principal use to make money by short-term rentals, then it is not a home, it is not a second home.
And that's how people historically second homeowners on the cave, how they use their properties.
That's right.
They rented it out maybe a month or two in the summer, and that was it.
So that they could use it in June and September.
Use it into shelters and part of.
So this is almost like looking at, coming back to that.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
I have a question, Paul, the, uh, the whole percentage thing, percentage of growth, another metric to lay up against the planning board, is that, you think that's gonna help them shape the project? That was really the question, the real issue was being able to shape the project, yes and, right, yes, we'll approve under these conditions.
It gives, it gives the planning board definitely another tool in helping them to shape the project, but um, there's always gonna be a lot of other factors that are more subjective when you get into
See, that's the thing.
The design, you know, so it's not a cure-all, but I think the issue that we've been coming up with against, as I said, is we have a site coverage limit, so you're gonna do your project, you have to be under that limit, but there's a lot of areas in town, a lot of neighborhoods where the first or second house in with, wants to, you know, expand and do their, their dream, their dream project, and it's just, yes, they're under the limit, but they're, in terms of style, arch, you know, architectural style, all that stuff, that's still gonna be somewhat subjective, but just the the size of the house is a way, if, if there's a limit on that, that is kind of statistically based, controlled. Then at least you're in the realm of, you're not blowing out the whole average of the neighborhood, at least, and then, and then you can talk about, you know, the architecture and the orientation of the house and all that kind of stuff, so it doesn't.
I, I think that, I, I actually agree with it, but I'm just trying to think about how we used to use detrimental to the neighborhood. Detrimental to the neighborhood was the way out of everything. If you had eight butters show up, and they thought it was too big, it was too big.
That's not been the trend, no.
Yeah, well, so.
And we all, and we put in size limits, right, nobody can build next, and we gave the, the smaller lots, the two, twenty thousand square foot, a little bit more room to maneuver. I'm just wondering if we're, if we're over codifying this thing, that's probably my question.
Yeah, so I, what my observation has been is that, yes, we put these limits in, but there's still a lot of subject, as it keeps in, there's a lot of subjectivity in the process as it plays out, and it's, I think the board has, finds it difficult to say no to a project where it's under the site coverage, you know, so someone's coming in and says, said I had to be at that, under this percentage, I'm at under this percentage, so now why can't I do it? When you're looking at the scope of the projects, yes, you're under the, you're under the threshold, but the house is way huger than anything else in the neighborhood, and then what does that do to the, and that gets back to the character of the neighborhood, so then over time,
Yeah.
then the net, so that gets approved, the next person comes in and says, well, you approved that one, they're under the threshold, I'm also under the threshold, but then you get, the, the neighborhood starts to change over time, and that was really the impetus of doing all of this, was to try to limit the impact of everybody gradually.
Right.
Yeah, and I mean, obviously, everyone's gonna want to over time improve their property, expand a little bit, but the site coverages were to allow expansion within, within reason, but then you say, what's reasonable, so this is trying to get, like,
Yeah.
We, it would basically be a way to try to calculate, okay, here's the average square foot, it's like coverage of the neighborhood. You can expand up to whatever the number is.
Well, that's the thing, what's, what's the number you guys are thinking of, are you thinking about the average?
That would be, that would be the analysis part, we'd have to figure out how to do that, and.
About two years, but I'm, are you looking at, like, you can't go any bigger than the biggest house?
No, I mean.
Well, I, I don't know, I mean, that would be.
Okay, so you have.
Really looking at having the task force look at it and make some recommendations.
Yeah, because right now, people are just, the trend I have seen happening is that people are just building the biggest they can. And that's just, they're going to the max every time, and without the ability to quantify community character, it's difficult for the board to comfortably put those restrictions into place.
No, I, I, I've done it, I, I get it, I'm trying to figure out where they are with it and what's the thinking.
Oh, well, this is just us saying, this is, this is me bringing this to the board, saying, are we interested in asking them to look further at this? So they haven't even really looked at it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and so, so this would be something that, you know, as the task force would look at it, we'd work with the planning and zoning board, get everyone's input.
Yeah, that's, it's big enough, I think, to call a, you know, not a, what was the terminology that?
Oh, Mary Ne.
For what?
What was that meeting that was known under the name, the wording of it?
Uh, I forget, I don't know what you.
No, it's, forget it, that's, it's a term that we never used before.
Oh, I'm blanking, sorry.
That's okay, but, but you, that'll come, it'll come back full circle, and we'll get a chance to kick the tires.
Absolutely, and I have, I have to say, if, if, if our experience with the zoning task force is true, after when they start to look at it, they're gonna come back with their list of all the things you've asked them to do, and say, what's the priority for this year?
Okay.
So, you know, you're just adding something to the list.
So we have Mary Ne on the, uh.
Good.
She's called in.
Poor Mary.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Mary.
Okay, I just wanted to, um, clarify or emphasize something, when we did the development limits a couple years ago, there were really two components, if you look at the intent, it said that we established maximum site coverage, but we also said that in determining whether a project goes forward, there's two criteria, one is the site coverage, and the other one is neighborhood character, and how this, a particular project fit within the current neighborhood character. The issue that Jamie is raising is that what we're finding is the development limits are, you know, are very specific, so you know, you can quantify that, and you can see you're over or under, but when the planning board gets to, is this consistent with the character, which is very ambiguous in terms of, well, how do you define that, what's the average, what should you do? That is where the experience we're seeing is that they continue to have great difficulty making a deter, you know, really, a- as Bob said, conditioning the project so that it fits in the neighborhood, so, I mean, we've actually heard from a planning board. I mean, we've actually heard from planning board members that more specificity is actually easier for them. Having said all that, as, as was just said, we've not analyzed this, so this is really just a concept. But I just wanted to refer you back to the original zoning amendment. It was always intended that both size limits and. Community character were, and I think we use the word equally, should be equally considered. And that's not what's happening in the decision-making process right now.
Okay.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks a lot, Mary.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that explains. One thing, while I have both Mary on, on Zoom and Paul here is next Monday, the Seashore Advisory. Commission is going to be discussing ADUs within the park.
Hmm, okay.
So I didn't know if either one of you would be interested. I, I, I'm not sure about you, Mary. I know you're talking about ADUs a bit in the uh. On the task force, but I thought Paul would be.
No, we definitely.
When is that? I didn't.
Uh, I think it's Monday at one, is that?
Yeah, I'll try to.
Something like that. I'll, I'll send it. I can send it to both. I have, I have both your emails.
Thank you. I'll try to be there and we are looking, we're working with town council.
Yeah, one o'clock.
How to address the ADU by law with the Seashore. So and obviously Truro and Wellfleet and probably town rise, so.
Right.
Yeah. Great. That'll be a good.
All right.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Has this concluded of the one thing at a time?
Can I, can you move to another subject?
Well, no, it's, it's the same, uh. I went to look at the agenda the other day on the website and it said January twenty-first, joint regulatory workshop, zoning task force, Eastham Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals and Eastham Select Board. And um. I looked at the agenda and I didn't know if you wanted to take this as an opportunity to shamelessly promote that event in any way or tell us. Tell what. More about it?
Well, it's, it's uh.
At the library.
Yeah, it's at the library on the twenty-first at three. That was the date that seemed to work best for the majority of all the groups involved. It's a public meeting like all of them, but it's really intended to be more of a workshop, so for the board members.
Before, before Paul and the zoning task force do the, take it to the people.
Right, so we wanna go through, we wanna go through.
Sorry.
The information as best we can. Some of it is um. You know, it is kind of technical, but we want to make sure everyone at least understands all the basics and, and really. Make sure everyone's comfortable with it and if there's red flags, we can get ahead of it and address that before we get into. The full-on town meeting ramp up. And so we will need to um, we'll do that workshop. We will have another. Workshop for the, our public info session for the general public. Um to be determined, we gotta work out the date. Because this zoning district is under, also under the joint jurisdiction of. Eastham, but also the Cape Cod Commission. We have to go to a public hearing with the Cape Cod Commission and get their review. So the commission staff is working closely with us. So we'll have that in February and then we'll have a planning board, the official local public hearing with the planning board in March. So there'll be a lot of opportunities, but we will be targeting like a, some sort of public info session. Just to. So. In addition to this workshop.
Will it be recorded?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah, and we'll, we're preparing a nice little packet for everybody. You'll have a little binder with all the, all the material and.
Nice.
For that. You'll be fully armed as you talk to folks in the community.
Excited for this. A lot of work has gone into it. A lot of work, so.
Yeah, and I, again, tip my cap to the uh task force, because.
They're amazing.
Putting in a lot of effort and helping.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mary.
It's one of the best decisions.
Yeah.
Last couple of years, no doubt about it.
Yeah.
So I had um. I'm sorry.
Yeah, town manager's report. Jump into it.
Without you telling me.
I was just gonna say it, so.
Um, I had on mind to remind you that we're doing a special joint meeting with the FinCom on your regular meeting. The next Monday meeting to do the budget presentation. So that will be the full budget presentation and then. At the thirteen.
I won't speak here.
Okay, you can watch it on. Yes. They're gonna join you for your regularly scheduled meeting and then the special joint meeting with the planning board.
That I can be at.
Was because we didn't want to just invite, it's too big a topic to just invite them to your meeting, so we really needed to have a special meeting. And I apologize if some of you can't make that meeting, but I think it's, it's, it just kicks it off for us to. Find out, and once you get your binder of information. Um, if you have any real concerns, you can call Paul or, or Mary and discuss it, but, but it's basically to check things out with you and the planning board jointly before we move on to the next. And the FinCom.
And that's.
That's the twenty-first.
That's the twenty-first.
Oh, the twenty-first.
Yeah, sorry.
Twenty-first, three.
Yes.
At three o'clock.
At the library.
So we have to advertise it as a public meeting. You don't all have to come, but we have to advertise it as a public meeting. We'd certainly love it if you would all come, but if you can't, then. You know, we'll tape it and get you the materials.
I could make it.
Um, and I think that's all I had and my update is kind of like, because it's mostly just events and things coming up, so.
Great.
New, that's the next one. I have one thing.
Okay.
We need to put on the agenda to appoint Peter Wade.
Oh, yes.
Education. I talked to him. He's, he's all.
Great.
His question is, when's the meeting?
Let's do it. We can do other business. That's it. We didn't, we didn't foresee it.
We can do it now, that's fine. Sure.
Because it's your appointment.
Right.
It's not a.
And it's, yeah, totally qualifies as other business.
Motion.
Then I make a motion. We appoint Peter Wade to uh be an Eastham representative on the. Naucet Regional School System Agreement Committee.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five to zero.
All right.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, minutes. I didn't see anything in there for August fifth. I don't know.
She didn't put it in?
No, there's only three in there.
Okay, then do three.
So we have January twenty-ninth, June third and December sixteenth. She found some floating around that hadn't been.
Hadn't been approved.
Well, at the end of the year, we get notes from the clerk's office.
Naughty list.
The naughty list.
If we've forgotten something.
That's pretty good compared to some other committees that have been off, let me tell you. So I need a motion to approve those minutes.
I move to approve the January twenty-ninth, June third and December sixteenth minutes. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
And then any other business or respondents? I'm hungry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.